I'm gonna go ahead and call it. Everybody's ready? Okay. All right. I, it is 7:01 and I am calling to order the meeting of St. Louis Park Public Schools School District on this June 22nd, 2020. It is recommended that the school, oh, sorry, I have to remind everyone that we are meeting via Zoom in conjunction with the global pandemic of COVID-19 and pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D point 021, I believe. Okay, first up is the approval of the agenda. Tonight, we have the superintendent's report. Our discussion items include first, the math update by Dr. Duffy, the community education presentation. Hi Lisa Green, the out-of-school time update by Superintendent O'Sai. Budget discussion for fiscal year 21 by Patricia Magnuson. Then we've got policy development, first reading of policy 536, gender inclusion. And that includes a presentation by Superintendent O'Sai pursuant to that policy of the school district's procedures around that. Then policy development, second reading of policies 208, 610, 708, and 711. And then we have our consent agenda. And then our action agenda, which includes fiscal year 21 budget approval, approval of long-term facility maintenance funding strategy, approval of District 287 long-term facility maintenance resolution, sorry. Next is the approval of the transportation contracts with Park Adam and MTI. Then the approval of the solar panel contract. And then policy development, second reading of policies 208, 610, and 708, followed by communications and transmittals and adjournment. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Colin will move.
I'll second.
Colin moves and Laura seconds. Karen, do you want to do the roll call? Sure. Mary Tomback?
Aye.
Ann Casey? Is Ann Casey?
Aye, sorry, I couldn't find it.
Heather Wilsie?
Aye.
Colin Cox?
Aye.
Laura McLendon?
Aye.
Ken Morrison? Ken Morrison?
Aye, aye.
And Karen Waters, aye. Okay, pass me all. 7:0. All right, first up is the superintendent's report by Superintendent O'Sai.
Good evening Chair Tomback, members of the board. I apologize about that. I was muted. This evening for my superintendent's report, I would like to highlight a couple of items, upcoming items and work that we've been doing here in the district over the past couple of weeks. I mean, the first thing I would like to do is just take a moment to acknowledge and celebrate the commencement exercise that will occur tomorrow evening at our high school, which will be our 121st commencement exercise here in St. Louis Park Public Schools. So I would like to just take a moment and thank Sarah Thompson, our Director of Communications and Community Relations, our high school administrative team, and all of our staff that have worked extremely hard over the past couple of months to try to create an event that would truly honor our students here in St. Louis Park Public Schools. So I'm excited about the event tomorrow evening. I believe that it will create an opportunity for students and their families to truly celebrate all of their hard work and accomplishments. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank our staff for everything that they've done to make this possible. I had an opportunity to drive past the high school today to spy on the setup and it appeared that things were coming together very nicely. And I also have been watching the weather closely and it appears that we will have a beautiful night to honor the class of 2020. I also would like to just take a moment to share some information about the work that we've been doing over the past couple of weeks to prepare for the start of the 2020-2021 school year. I know that many of you received information last week from the Commissioner of Education connected to the guidance that was shared to all school districts across the state regarding planning for three different possible scenarios. So the guidance that came out really gave us a framework to work from as we plan for either in-person learning for all students, hybrid learning, and/or distance learning. Our local task force met last week on Tuesday and we had a tremendous first meeting. We have had approximately 30 staff and teachers come together to start to prepare for these three different options. And I believe that the recent guidance that was provided by the state on Thursday of last week will help us as we continue to move our work forward in preparing for whatever scenario is ultimately decided by our leadership at the state level. I also would like to just remind all of our community members about a tremendous opportunity that we have for staff, families, parents, guardians, community members to participate in the development of our 2020-2025 Strategic Plan for Racial Equity Transformation. If you're interested in learning more about this opportunity, I encourage you to visit our district website at www.slpschools.org. Again, that is www.slp, I'm sorry, www.slpschools.org, where you can find more information about this opportunity. Applications are due on June 30th. So I highly encourage you to sign up if you're interested in being part of the development of our next strategic plan. And that concludes my report for this evening, Chair Tomback.
Thank you very much Superintendent O'Sai. All right, first in our discussion items, we have a math curriculum update. Patrick Duffy, Director of Curriculum and Instruction, will discuss this with us.
And this is Ila Saxena. Dr. Duffy did just phone me and let me know he's having a little trouble with his audio. So he might jump on, but I'm here to kind of start us off. It will be myself and Jill Metal, who will be speaking about the math pilot curriculum update. And so if we could advance the slide, we'll just kind of get ourselves going. So just to remind everyone of where we've been, we are moving through a three-phase sort of process. And we are in phase two, I believe. Phase one was about reflecting kind of on where we were and who we are and all of that. And phase two is really getting into what are the best practices around mathematics and looking at our curriculum. And that's kind of just where we are. We are in the second year of this process. It is a three-year process. And so this is just one piece of kind of beginning that racial equity transformation plan in the area of mathematics. And if we could go ahead and advance the slide, that would be terrific. Thank you. So just to give people an update, we have been working in in kind of a couple different teams. We have a math design team that's comprised of just five of us. Jill, one of the math design team members, is going to be here presenting as well. And we have two middle school members, FA Mensah Brown and Maddie Wigleitner. And we also have a high school design team member, Liz Husing. And so just the two elementary people are here speaking today, although I wonder if the other three are listening in perchance. But what we really, where we really started with this was with our racial equity purpose statement. As a group, we started back with a kickoff, not this past spring, but the spring before, with a consulting team, a larger group of people. Not just classroom teachers, we had special education people, we had interventionists. We have a very large group of people, I think maybe 25 or so. And from that, we, after the design team was created, what we decided, the five of us, was that we really needed to ground ourselves in our purpose. And rather than just jumping in and kind of picking curriculums and making changes, we needed to figure out where we were and what was important to us. And so we thought that was the beginning of all of our work. And after we created our purpose, the second piece was to create these mathematical frameworks. And so we spent the bulk of the year talking about these things amongst ourselves and with our consulting team. Oh, sorry. Anyway, we did, we've been working collaboratively to create something called the SLP Mathematical Frameworks. And I believe if you have a copy of this presentation, you can click on the link and see what that's all about. It highlights the mathematical best practices we hope we would see in all math classrooms across the district, E12. Alongside of this work this year, we researched math curriculums. And at some point this year, I believe it was March, we met three times this year as consulting team, as kind of a large group. And in March, just before we shut down, we had representatives from five different curriculums to come and present their curriculum to the math consulting team. But I should say, prior to that, we did have a meeting in January where we actually looked at pretty many different things as a large consulting group. And so we kind of whittled it down from January to March. And Jill will be talking a little bit about our, kind of where we are. But just to remind everybody of what's really important to us, our purpose statement reads like this. "All SLP students will be integrated into classrooms where they see themselves as successful mathematicians, regardless of race, gender, or lived experience." And so our thought is that the curricular resource that is chosen for E5, it would contain pertinent content, but more importantly, support instructional practices that we'd like to see in all classrooms, E5. So that means that the curriculum is going to have to support our goal of promoting a classroom culture that values and encourages our students' authentic selves as well as the values and skill, as well as values, the skills mathematicians need to have, which are asking questions, thinking and listening critically, questioning answers, communicating effectively, objectively evaluating without bias, and describing patterns so that all students will understand how they can use math to change the world. If the curriculum does these things, then we'll be able to shift the mindsets of the teachers who will in turn shift the classroom experience for our students. And we can really be on our way to that racial equity transformation that we're all hoping for. I think Jill is up to talk to you a little bit about the curriculum that we've chosen to pilot.
Thank you, Ila. Good afternoon, everyone. Just in full transparency, it's bedtime for three of my kids and they're all very little. So if you hear screaming, they're okay, no one be alarmed. I'm super excited to be here with you tonight and to share about the curriculums. You see them listed in front of you, Illustrative, Bridges in Mathematics, and Intermath. So after all of the digs that we did into all the curriculums, these are the three that have come up as the three that we think have the potential to make the biggest impact with our students in St. Louis Park. Illustrative is currently a 6 through 12 program. And they're just now coming into the elementary level. It was designed and created to make a shift in mathematical thinking and the way that we teach math. So if we think about a continuum, Illustrative would be at the far end of the continuum. It's a big mindset shift for our students and for our teaching staff. As I say that, many teachers in St. Louis Park are already shifting from the current curriculum that we have and trying out different things based on best practice in mathematics already. I know I can speak to Peter Hobart for sure, that that's been work that we've been heavy in for the last several years, but specifically this year as well. And so Illustrative really asked teachers to think differently about math. So when students come to mathematics, it starts with a warm-up. And that's just basically getting the brain thinking creatively about math. And then from there, it moves into problem solving. So the students would be presented with one or two different problems or tasks that they would work collaboratively to solve. So the teacher wouldn't teach anything specifically upfront. The students would engage in using what they know about mathematics and their mathematical understanding to solve these problems collaboratively. The teacher would roam and ask questions and be a support person and a think partner as the students work through the problems. And it's at the very end where the students all come together to share their thinking that the mathematical language is lifted even higher to the table. And so it's kind of opposite of how many of us probably grew up with mathematics, where the teacher, when we were in school, may have taught us directly what we're supposed to do. We go off and do that and we come back to the table and we, you know, read the right or wrong. This way of thinking is really flipping that to where the students are driving the curriculum and they're driving the thinking and they're driving the knowledge. The exciting thing for Illustrative, you've heard GT talk about, the GT design team talk about this this year and you've heard the math design team talk as well, is the premise behind Illustrative is inclusion. And so we're not talking about a low group or a high group or a medium group. We're talking about all kids being together and all kids having gifts and assets to share. And so that's the premise of how Illustrative is designed. There are strategies and tools built in for working with our multilingual learners and strategies and tools built in for working with students who receive special education support. But it's really designed to be inclusive where students aren't being pulled out, that everything's being done together so that we can lift the thinking of everyone and benefit from the thinking that everyone brings to the table. And the other thing that I think is really exciting about Illustrative is when you start with Illustrative, you start with a two-day intensive training. And that's where teachers really learn the pedagogy and the thinking behind this new way of thinking. So even if Illustrative isn't one that we choose in the end, the two-day training that's going to take place is going to lift the level of thinking for our teachers in our district drastically, and we're really excited about that. The other piece with Illustrative, it includes a huge family support bundle within it. And so as we're moving through each unit as teachers, there's pieces that we send home to families to help families understand the new way of thinking and the new way of talking about math and how to connect with that at home as well. So we're excited for that component. And then one piece that really stood out to the design team and the curriculum team is the group of researchers and people who came together to create Illustrative was very diverse racially and by gender as well. And when we're looking at a lot of math curriculums, we didn't see that. We didn't see a group of racially diverse educators and researchers coming together. And that was something that really excited us when we think about the multiple perspectives and really thinking about how we're ensuring the rigor for all of our students, but especially our most marginalized students and ensuring success for all. So I could talk about it forever because I'm excited. But really, it's about a mindset shift for everyone and it's exciting. So we'll have several teachers, and we'll talk about this more in the district, piloting that one this year, and we'll get to that part in a minute. The next one is Bridges and Bridges. And in the last few years, three districts near us have recently adopted it. And that would be Anoka, Osseo, and Yzeta. And I spoke with teachers from those different districts. And the one thing that they've all said is that, well, to be honest, the first thing they say is the first year is a lot of work because Bridges is full of hands-on materials, which is really exciting for our early childhood through five kiddos, is that they'll have the chance to really manipulate math and learn it conceptually before we think about the procedural part of it. So for many of us, we might have learned how to multiply, like the steps of multiplying. But do we really understand the how behind it and how that operation works? And that's what Bridges is designed to do, is to help children really understand what they're doing to take it to a deeper level. And so the teachers in those districts have said that their level of mathematical teaching has increased drastically and the conversations that have involved with the students has just been changing in their classroom drastically. And so that's something that I'm excited to see how that plays out here in St. Louis Park. And as I mentioned before, it's very hands-on, it's problem-solving as well. Students work together, just like in Illustrative, to come up with strategies and solutions for different problems and to share their thinking. And they come up with questions that they need to ask to solve the problems and the teacher helps lift the level of conversation up as well. And yeah, so that's Bridges. That's one I'm super excited about too. And then in full transparency, as we move into Math, one thing that really stood out to our team and my team, I mean the collective from all the elementary and early childhood schools in our district, is the need to ensure for PSI that we were really thinking about the Spanish components when it came to the curriculum. And so PSI has spoken about, you know, in the past, some curriculums being chosen that maybe don't have everything in Spanish on the student side and also on the teacher's side as well. And as we dug into all the curriculums, that's something that we looked really hard and critical at. And one thing we found is that while many curriculums have Spanish student versions, there's very few curriculums that have the Spanish teacher version. And by that, I mean the materials that are put out in front of students is in Spanish, but what the teacher is actually looking at is in English. And we heard from the PSI teachers, from many of them, that really having the teacher guide in Spanish was critical for them. And so that's something that we've taken heart and we've really thought hard about. Again, in that full transparency, at this point, Illustrative and Bridges do not have a teacher Spanish edition. And so as a design team, we really talked about that and we talked about the limitations with that and how could we overcome that? So if Illustrative or Bridges turns out to be the best curriculum, math curriculum for our students, then how as a system, may we be able to work together to help translate Illustrative or Bridges into Spanish for the teachers? Just something that's going through our mind because we want to make sure that our students have what they need to be successful and we want to lift the barriers that may be causing us to choose a curriculum just because it has a teacher Spanish edition that may not be the best for our students. So how can we remove that barrier as a system? So Intermath is most similar to what we currently have, which is math expressions. And Intermath is not math expressions, but it's the same publishing company, so it's very similar. There is a current, most up-to-date math expression. And so we looked at that one and we compared it to Intermath. And the team of all the teachers across the district that are in the math consulting team felt that Intermath was the best choice for math expressions and Intermath. What teachers really liked about it is there was a lot of built-in tools that teachers felt would be supportive of students. And so there was a lot of like guiding language for teachers to use when they're working with students who may be struggling with the concept and guiding language to use when you're working with students who might be accelerating in that subject. Language for working with multilingual learners, language for working with students who receive special education support. So there was just a lot of built-in tools that teachers felt were exciting and something that could be beneficial to our teachers and our students. And so again, going back to that continuum that I talked about before, if you think about Illustrative, it is the farthest on the left as far as radical change. And it doesn't mean that teachers aren't currently maybe doing some of these things in their classroom, but as a system, this is not the way that we're teaching and talking about math. And so that, to me, is exciting because it has the potential to really be transformative if it really plays out the way that we're hoping that it would play out. And then Bridges in Mathematics is very similar. It kind of falls toward that Illustrative side. And then Intermath is kind of that other pendulum. And again, the reason we really included this one is because, again, it's most similar to what we have. It's not a huge shift for teachers. And the question comes, you know, we've heard a lot of people say that math expressions isn't working because it's so outdated. And so one question we ask ourselves is, well, let's see, if we get the most up-to-date Intermath, which is the math expressions, and we see what's come about pedagogically for Intermath in the last 10 years, and we think about how the problems are being presented to students, would that really make a difference in our students' mathematical experiences? Because if you think back to the beginning, what we're really trying to do is transform the math experience for students. And so that's what we're hoping that one of these curriculums will do for our students.
In order to get to this point, we kind of made a quick decision. We were in distance learning and not really sure, should we hold off? Should we move forward? And we just decided to go for it to see about, would we have teachers interested in piloting? And we weren't really sure if we'd get a lot of people interested in piloting for next year, especially since we don't know how the fall is going to look yet. But we had 38 teachers signed up to pilot, which is incredible, across all of our sites, including early childhood teachers, special education teachers, and interventionists. So that was really exciting. I feel really happy about that. What we're working on doing is balancing out those 38 people so that we have, you know, not just everyone piloting one curriculum, that we have it kind of spread out. So that's one piece that we're working on right now. And when we had people fill out an application to show that they were interested, we did encourage them to apply by team, but it wasn't required. And so by and large, we have teams of teachers, mostly teams of teachers by grade level, that have signed up together to pilot a similar curriculum. And those that are not attached to another person, we're hoping to, since we're now so adept at doing Google meets and video conferencing, we feel like it's not really a barrier to be at two different sites and having a meeting to talk about how things are going. So that's kind of where we are right now. And it's just really exciting, I think.
So as we think about the next steps, we're in the process of securing all of the pilot agreements so that we can move forward. And one of those pieces is training for the staff that's piloting. And so as I mentioned before, for Illustrative, there'll be a two-day back-to-back training for staff that are part of Illustrative. We're also hoping to bring in other people such as equity coaches, principals, teaching and learning team, different people who might support within the building as we work on these piloting programs. Bridges will be a 90-minute launch training for teachers where they will learn how to get started and how to work with the new tools and materials. And then for each Bridges and Intermath, there will be webinars and check-ins along the way to ensure that teachers are being successful and that the staff that work for those piloting companies can support questions we're having, wonderings we're having, and give us some guidance. And as you see where it says, opportunities for pilot staff to collaborate, this is what Ila alluded to earlier. When I share the piloting process with you and next steps, nothing's finalized yet. We're meeting next week to kind of continue our brainstorming as a consulting team and think about what does this really look like? But what we're hoping for and what our intentions are is to really have a lot of collaboration as we go forward. And so one of the things that we thought really hard about is if we have some teachers piloting Illustrative and we have some teachers piloting Bridges and we have some teachers piloting Intermath, when we come together in the end, how do we choose which one's the best one? I mean, if I'm piloting Illustrative, I think that's the best one. And if Ila's piloting Bridges and she thinks that's the best one, how do we come to consensus and understanding? And so we're really trying to develop a process to where we're constantly in collaboration with each other, where if I'm a first-grade teacher at Peter Hobart teaching Illustrative and there's a team at PSI teaching Bridges in first grade, how are we comparing and looking at what those standards look like in the different curriculums? How are we thinking about how our students are talking about math? And as Ila mentioned earlier, we have a framework that we developed to really think about what are the best practices that we should see in mathematics today? And how can we have conversations around those frameworks with all the staff that are piloting the curriculums? And so that's our hope. And in doing that as well, we're thinking about how do we bring parents and students to the table with that too? And so we know there will be parents and students to the table to talk about it, but we're in the conversation of what does that look like? And so for example, one idea that one of our consulting team members had is to take a standard that we're all teaching in our different curriculums and bring it forward, whether that's we actually come forward together personally and we do that lesson live, or we videotape students doing that lesson and we compare and we look at, how does it look like in Bridges to learn about this geometry standard? And how does it look like in Illustrative to learn about this geometry standard? So that parents and staff across the piloting sites can really see what that looks like for students. And we were intentional about wanting to include equity coaches and IB coordinators and principals in this process as well, because we felt like they have a bigger lens. Because we felt like they have a a bigger um lens into multiple classrooms. And each of those people bring a different perspective that can be really beneficial. And so what I hope that's coming across is we've really tried to be really intentional. About including lots of voices, including multiple perspectives and and thinking about. Um, how do we ensure that at the end of this pilot? What we've chosen isn't what's best for teachers? We want it to be beneficial and understood by teachers. But what are we choosing that's really lifting the level of mathematical thinking for our students and making them feel successful? Um, in mathematics and and investing a lot for math for students. And so that's where we're at at this point. Um, we're continuing that conversation and of course, we'll take any feedback along the way that anyone might have of how we can um best. Best um solicit the feedback from students and parents as well.
And so this last slide is just kind of a timeline, so you can see where we've where we've been and it's been a lot of work. We were really working on finalizing the language of our racial equity purpose statement as a group back in the winter, this past winter. And then we were tweaking the draft of the SLP frameworks. Um, just a note about the frameworks, we're really trying hard. We noticed that another district, um, I can't remember which one, when we were looking out at other districts. People, when they think about mathematical frameworks, sometimes take what would be considered maybe the the go to place. Uh, National Council of Teachers of Mathematics and CTM's language. And um, we decided that wasn't quite enough for us when we're thinking about racial equity transformation. We couldn't just lift what the National Council of Teacher uh Council of Teachers of Mathematics has to say. We had to add in a piece about racial equity as well. And so we call our frameworks in draft form because we imagine that will shift the language slightly and and wordsmith it a little bit. But we really think that developing the identity of the mathematician is really, really key to the to the work that we're doing. So we need our curriculum and our instructional practices to support that. Um, let's see, I'm not going to read through the whole thing, but you can see that by this time next year, spring next year, maybe. We'll hope to have a curriculum decision. Um, we will hope that throughout all of the next school year, we'll have teachers piloting, we'll have the trainings, we'll have the collaborative meetings. And we're getting feedback from all of the stakeholders, so the community members and the students along the way. And again, we're still kind of playing around with how does that look? But we know that all next year, that's where we're going to be seeking that in that um that feedback. Um, we'll hope to purchase something if we can land on on a decision. Uh, in a year's time, we'll hope to be purchasing and planning for our PD. And then begin that, begin that implementation. So we'd love to take any questions or if you have any feedback right away for us about how we can go about. Involving community and students, we're we're happy to hear it, but we're really excited and and I I look forward to how this unrolls this coming school year.
I'll just add something as well. Yes, my uh, my video and audio wasn't working before, but I want to thank Ila and Jill for um their presentation. I'll just, I'll just add um for the board, just a reminder, we have a bicameral. Really process with a consulting team and a design team and Ila and Jill represent our design team. They're two of five, um, and they have been very collaborative with thirty plus teachers. And now we're bringing thirty five plus more into the fold to help make this decision. And one of the things that they have been very clear about and that we have been very clear in this is that. We are going into this pilot um different than maybe pilots have been done in the past in St. Louis Park. We have not made a decision about what um, what curriculum that we are going to adopt. And that is something that um maybe different from what is the usual. We truly are going to gather as much data, I think you've heard that, um as possible and make a really informed decision. That is student centered and that is going to have a lot of different voices on it. Um, we are committed to having parent viewing sessions. Um, where they can see and experience the curriculum that their children are seeing as well. And um, we hope that we're going to have a lot of opportunity to um cross examine the curriculum throughout the year. And to really see how it matches our values around um anti racism. And around inclusion and how it matches what we are currently doing and what our vision for our future is as well. So just want to thank Ila and Jill and open it up to your questions or comments.
Mary Ann, just a brief comment here. I wanted to say that as I've been, when I was going out to the PTO meetings, um, you're over, I really appreciated. The teachers talking about the math efforts and I don't know if that's been happening at some of the other schools. Because I haven't been attending those meetings, but attending the Peter Hobart one and hearing and actually where there was um a couple of activities where we talked about. How different ways that you can solve math problems was really helpful. I think as a parent to just sort of see and hear these things too. And not just like at the theoretical level, this is how this works or whatever, but to actually do some of it and talk with some of that. I've really appreciated that. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you for that.
This is Ken and I have a list of questions. Uh, by the way, fantastic job that you guys. I applaud you. So far, what you're doing is fantastic. I was part of a curriculum evaluation of math probably ten, twelve years ago. But uh, it was never in this depth. So um, specific questions. Illustrative, so the three different um, the three different options that you have for a curriculum. So the illustrative uh, first question around that one was, I I like that there's diverse people. People that are have developed it and are um. Are training on it and that's great that there's going to be a two day training for the um people that you pick for that group. I was wondering, how many people will they train in that two day training class? Roughly.
So. When you ask that question, do you mean how many based on what we've set, what we've? How many based on who's piloting or how many in general? So. Our hope and intention is to for sure, train the people who are piloting. So that they're successful incentive for success. And then our other hope is also to ensure that there's a community. That um surrounds the piloting teachers in order to support them and also to give another perspective. And so there could potentially be, you know, forty plus people in that training. When you start including equity coaches and teaching and learning team members and principals. And I'm wondering if your question is, could other people be included? Or if you're just.
Nope, nope, I just was wondering when I first heard it, I thought maybe all the teachers would go there and get trained. But then as you started going through it, there's going to be a pilot, so just want the core group that's going to be actually piloting that program. And plus the support, which makes a whole lot of sense. I'm going to come back to another question to that though, but the uh, the first, the next question around that one would be. So you had mentioned Oseo and another school district picked bridges. Did they also evaluate illustrative? And why did they not pick that? Or did you talk about that?
Yeah, thank you. That's a great question. So illustrative is brand new to elementary. So this is what they call their beta year this year. And so it's um, it's just first rolling out to the elementary level. And so not, um, it's not open for purchase yet. It's open for um review. And so what that basically means is because we're part of the pilot. We'll have the opportunity to give feedback to the makers of illustrative. So that further changes can be made before they go live with it. And so what we're piloting may not be the final stage of what it's going to look like. Because they're taking feedback from all the people piloting and using that feedback to improve it, to make it better.
So what's their date for release?
So the way that they've done it for, they started at um six eight and then moved into nine twelve and now they're heading down to elementary. And so the way that looks so far is that they beta test it, which is us. And then the following year, they roll it out, so it would be ready to go the following year. And then after that, they start adding on the other layer. So um, there's a curriculum company that works alongside illustrative. So illustrative is just like the the researchers and the creators of it. And there is a curriculum company that comes alongside them and kind of spruces it up and makes it pretty and adds the technology piece behind it. And makes it more user friendly for teachers and that follows right alongside of it. And so by next year, it would be ready for adoption. And if we were, if we were to choose that one.
Okay, um, so now I want to move to bridges. And um, Oseo's done it. How long have they had it in place?
So I actually wasn't Oseo and I think they started it right after I left there. And so I think they've been doing it for two years now.
Okay, did they, were we able to see any numbers improvements or not improvements or anything from them?
I knew you were going to ask that question.
You can get back to me then.
Um, I want to know that too. Um, that's what one of the teachers said is, so so I um. In education, as you know, um, everything always has um a delayed impact typically. Sometimes you'll see a a fast impact, but when you're making a systematic change, sometimes it takes a lag. And so for example, let's say that we give bridges and let's just say it's fantastic. Um, I don't know, I've never used it, but let's just say it. Um, and we give it to fifth graders, they've only had one year in it. But if we started them in kindergarten and started that mathematical process then, the impact we would see years later. Could be tremendous and that's what we would hope for, right?
Sure.
So I would love, love, love as much as you would to contact, for someone to contact. And start digging into those numbers as well. And I think as a design team, we can start doing that because I I have the same wondering and question. Talking to teachers and just on the ground feedback is they can see it making an impact. But the hard data, like it sounds like you are like me, um, it's something that I think is crucial for us to see as well.
Sure, and I'd love to see the shift. So a fourth grader or a eighth grader, ninth grader shifting. Their way that they had been mathematicians in the past and how are they today? That would be an interesting one because that's really what we want to do. We don't want to just. Serve the kindergartens and then our program is going to work in twelve years. But um, serving everyone so that program works after a couple of years. You can see the progress in those individuals instead of as in a group.
Right.
Feel me? Um, okay, so I'm I'm almost done with my list of questions. Does anyone else want to ask some questions? They can come back to me.
Go ahead, Ken, you keep going.
Okay, so um, on the pilot, let's go move into that one. So is it, is it possible? So I I love the idea of what you're talking about with um having a um. Community come in and see um how a standard is delivered for each of the different pilots. And because, no, this is, I'm just going to say it. So because we're not evaluating the teachers or the students, but actually the tools that are going to be delivered. So I'm wondering, coming back to the illustrative training. I'm wondering, is there a group, a small group of people, teachers, that would be able to go through each of the curriculum trainings? And then deliver that one um standard to each of the three different classes? To be able to.
You might be talking to them.
You might, you might be talking to them right now.
Okay, because that would be a true way to evaluate the the tools as opposed to the teachers and the students. Because they're all going to be getting the same information from the same, I mean, the information, different information from the same people. So um, we're moving that factor. So that's just an idea. Um, so that we can actually see how that is.
So to that, I would say it sounds like you should come join our committee. Ready to go. Um, so that's what we've talked about too, and that's, I'm I'm excited that you're saying that. Um, again, we're still in the process of what does that really look like? Um, but that was our hope in making sure that we didn't have just some people learning illustrative and just some people learning bridges. And so just some people learning Intumath. But that we had um, like a team, I don't want to say above because that sends the wrong connotation, but a a team, another layer. Who is um, knows all three and can really think about the frameworks and think about all three of those pieces and how they really present. And be inside those classrooms too, to see how it rolls out with real students in real classrooms as well. And so that's our hope and our intentions behind all of them. Um, because when we talk to different curriculum reps, one thing that they advised us about a lot. Is that if you're not careful, you're going to get people who just think illustrative is the best because that's all they know. That's what they pilot it and bridges isn't the best because that's all they pilot it. And we're really trying to avoid that and really try to go back to what are our students showing us? And how do we know? And so that means we have to have a higher level lens, just what we pilot it. So for example, I am a first grade teacher, I will pilot illustrative. But I also will take part in all the other trainings. And even though I'm piloting illustrative, my goal and intention, partly because I'm on the math consulting team. But this is what we'll hope to do with all of our piloting staff. Is to really think greater and bigger beyond what's in front of, you know, he has an illustrative pilator. And think about what's going to be in the best interest of our students. And then really use a a neutral lens as we think about that.
Perfect. I'll leave it alone because the other one was about a Rubik. And um, if you did that, that pilot with those individual teachers or deliverers of that curriculum. And then your Rubik would play out into that to figure out which one is going to be the best one. Because you'll see the results, you'll see the results from the kids as how they receive it, how they don't receive it. But how difficult was it? How much time you had to redo and so on and so forth. So, okay.
Thank you for those questions.
That's it, thanks.
I suspect that Ken may have asked a lot of other people's questions too, or at least gotten a lot more information out for us. So does anybody have anything else though?
I have a comment.
I was hoping that the the elementary teacher would chime in.
So I teach first grade too, Jill, and I actually teach bridges. And you are going to find that the people who piloted the first year are going to complain about how much work it is to put together. But once you get past the first year, it's fabulous. I don't know anything about illustrative, but it sounds amazing too. Um, the one comment I want to make is that my school though only did it for K through one. And then there's a different curriculum for the rest of the elementary school, and I think that was a huge mistake. And I love that you are doing the same curriculum from early childhood to fifth grade. I think that is the right thing to do for our students. And so I just want to commend your team for doing that because that is just really a missing component at my school. So good luck and I can't wait to hear what you guys discover.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, well, Ila and Jill, thank you so much. First of all, for all the work you're doing, but for then willing to take uh an evening in your summer to come and talk to us about it.
For sure.
Very grateful.
Well, we're really excited about it, so we could talk about it every day as you can see.
Well, your enthusiasm is palpable and that's so gratifying for us as board members to hear and as parents too. Um, so yeah, thank you very, very much. And please extend our gratitude to the rest of the design team and to all of the teachers who we are bringing on board. I think it actually, I mean, I I don't know how many teachers usually apply for things like this, but I think it says a lot about the enthusiasm of our teachers. That they signed up to come on board to evaluate this. So thank you.
Thank you. Great evening.
Bye bye.
Okay, next up, community education presentation by Lisa Green. The almost retired director of community education. Um, is going to provide us an update on community education programming for her. You're almost done, right? You've only got, the this week is your last week?
Uh, I'll be here till next Tuesday.
Okay.
I have one productive week left in me, I figure.
Well, thank you very much. Go ahead, Lisa.
Well, thank you Chair Tombak, Superintendent O'Scia and members of the board. Yes, this is my final uh school board presentation. And um, I'm kind of looking at it, I'm going to talk about our program areas, but. I kind of like going to talk about the overarching arc of the ten years that I've worked here. And uh, I will say this district has changed a lot. In the ten years that I've been here in in many different ways. And one case in point is that now the school board has completely turned over since I started working here. So uh, but there's been a lot of changes, a lot of really positive, great changes in the district and I'm, you know, and it just, it's going to, I just excited about what's going to be happening too for the next. going to be happening too for the next community director. Aston, are you the one that's, okay, thank you. So first of all, must talk about our early childhood programs. And uh, right now, this is what our programs look like in our early learning department. Uh, we have early childhood family education classes, which are parents and children together. Uh, and then we have early learning preschool, uh, which uh, supports families and serves children 33 months to the year before kindergarten in half-day classes. And this is an inclusive setting and I'll ta- talk in a minute about how different that is uh, from when I started. Um, and so staff uh, work together to provide formal and informal assessments and determine each child's strengths as well as areas that need to continue focus. And it's to prepare students for kindergarten. And our early learning preschool program is four-star parent-aware rated, which is the highest rating possible. And then we have uh, early childhood special education as part of the department, um, not under, necessarily under a community, but we do collaborate with them quite a bit. Um, next. Um, and tell me if I, I don't think I can advance these myself, so, but if I can, just let me know if I can do that. Um, so, but what we did in 2012 was to, um, is to have, we had a strategic planning um, a couple of days where we invited people from the community and teachers, uh, kindergarten teachers, as well as of course, early learning teachers. And um, and we used that strategic plan to guide our work. And now the, um, our early learning department is uh, joined with the district school improvement planning process. So now we're a part of that. And really uh, to have that kind of uh, continuous uh, learning from preschool uh, into the K-12 setting. Uh, through that strategic plan, our mission outcomes were to prepare all early learning programs and services through Common Curriculum Assessment and Professional Development and to ensure that parents and families who participate, participate in our early learning programs gain knowledge, skills, and confidence to enhance their child's growth and development. How this is different now, when I started working here, we had nine different early childhood programs. And now we have three. We have ECFE, uh, we have our early learning threes and fours, and we have Kids Place Childcare. Before that, we had uh, all of our programs, they were separate. They uh, were segregated in that they served, um, this, this program served special ed and this program served our low-income students and this program did this and this. So that was, um, it wasn't, it wasn't equitable and it was very confusing for families. So uh, over a period of about five years, um, we then turned our, um, we tamed those programs into the three programs that we have now where every, no matter where you go in our system in early learning, uh, a family will get the same uh, curriculum and the same uh, assessments and all the teachers have the same professional development. Um, and kids, now Kids Place Childcare, a big thing that happened in Kids Place um, over the last 10 years is that they have uh, went for and obtained accreditation um, through NACI, which is Association for the Education of the Young Child and the Minnesota After School Accreditation Program for our school age care. And uh, accreditation is hard. Anybody who's ever gone through it knows it's a ton of work, but it's very beneficial. Uh, what it does is it, it forces a program to like really study and look into itself and say, where are we doing well? What needs improvement? So it's a continuous program improvement plan. Uh, it's uh, once you get it done, it's not like that, it just, then you have it forever. They keep coming back every couple of years and assessing you. Um, that's, that would be that third-party evaluation, uh, those people coming in. And then uh, and then one of the, in addition to an improved program, we have increased Hennepin County Childcare Assistance Reimbursement. So because we're accredited, we, the Hennepin County will reimburse us for our students who are on assistance at a higher rate. So this is just a list, I won't read them all, but these are the, is a list of all the different um, benefits that come from accreditation. Um, and so, and then one of the things that we've done uh, over the last number of years is we, and this also came out of this accreditation process, is that we created full-time positions that are benefits-eligible and year-round for Kids Place educators. And what that does, um, you know, when you just have a whole bunch of part-time positions, you have a ton of turnover. But these jobs are really good jobs that people can actually support themselves on. So um, we have a lower staff turnover and that uh, ensures a continuity of staff for children and parents. That's all about that relationship piece with, uh, when families come back year after year, they see the same, they see the same staff. Um, and then uh, we just have a, a higher quality staff because we pay them well. And uh, they also get a lot of training and professional development. And uh, one of the things that we've been uh, working on too in Kids Place, in all of our program areas, but Kids Place uh, has really, really um, been able to uh, put intentionality to this, is to recruit, hire, and retain staff of color. And uh, and so having these really high-quality uh, jobs that uh, can support somebody has been really helpful in doing that. And Kids Place Preschool is also part of our early learning um, team. And uh, so they provide the same curriculum assessments and professional development as our other early learning programs. And they too, uh, are four-star parent-aware rated. Um, so, and now moving on to our youth services department, uh, things that have happened over the years, uh, about eight years ago, we started collaborating with the uh, Targeted Services Summer Learning Academy uh, in the summer to offer our enrichment programs for free to students who are in Summer Learning Academy. So they've been recruited into Summer Learning Academy, they get to, they get to uh, take those classes for free. And then uh, we can then use that same funding source, Targeted Services, to actually offer uh, not all, but uh, many of our summer learning, uh, our, our summer learning and play classes to the students who are taking Summer Learning Academy. And that partnership is, uh, every year it gets better until this year. And we can't do it this year because of the um, the way the Targeted Services has changed in their hybrid model and it, it just wouldn't work. So unfortunately, this year we can't do that, but we're hoping next year we'll just get right back into being able to offer those classes. It's a win-win for everybody. Our Youth Development Committee or the YDC, it's now has a greater emphasis on youth leadership development and racial equity. Uh, over the years, we've had an increase in participation and um, like huge increase in participation by students of color. And uh, when I started here, uh, YDC was more of a parent and teacher choice program. Uh, a child had to be um, like, a teacher had to like recommend them for the program or a parent would call and ask their, that their child be um, a part of YDC. And uh, we, we changed that oh, about five years ago. And right now, it's just in the middle school and the high school, and it's a student choice program. So students choose whether they want to be in the program or not. And uh, we found great success with that. We've had an increase in our youth enrichment participation and lower cancellation rate, and that's really important because nothing is more irritating to a parent than to find out at the last minute that their class, their, the class their child is going to be taking has been canceled. Uh, we've uh, engaged in fundraising efforts to, um, for tuition assistance for students. Uh, they sold a thousand pairs of socks in the last two years, maybe some of you have gotten some. I know I've been using them as stocking stuffers for the last two years. Um, and this year, uh, we're really a part of um, developing out-of-school time opportunities uh, for elementary and middle school, starting in the fall of 2020. And as part of that, and Aston will talk about this uh, in his presentation, but we're developing sliding fee scale opportunities uh, for families next year, which will be far more equitable uh, way of delivering uh, that type of programming. Now our adult programs, Lenox Community Center. Uh, I don't know if any of you remember what Lenox Community Center looked like 10 years ago? It was like painted an institutional green all over the inside, the paint was peeling, the office was in the middle of the building instead of in the front of the building. And over the years, through two bond referendums, um, Lenox has been remodeled uh, to create the space that it is now. It's, it's light, it's clean, all of our rooms have been remodeled, uh, we have no more peeling paint and um, and we've got technology in the room so we can um, offer uh, you know, offer classes, you know, that can use the technology, whereas before it was very difficult to do. So we've um, done a lot of work there. We um, we're trying to get, use it more, we, a lot of our district meetings happen there and things like that. So we really tried to create that into a welcoming space for everybody. Our volunteer program, um, when I started here, it was a joint city-school district program that was run out of community education. But uh, now it, each organization recruits and places its own volunteers, which is just uh, a little more efficient, but we still collaborate quite a bit with the city. We've added opportunities for Spanish speakers and other training opportunities. Um, Adult Enrichment, we've partnered with the city and police departments to offer classes. Uh, we've made, we've partnered with the teaching and learning department to offer CEUs for our teachers. So our teachers can take classes through us uh, for free or very low cost and uh, able to get their CEUs. We've expanded offerings to increase participation, so we've created the free-for-all, sliding fee scale classes and classes on racial equity and cultural competence. Adult Options in Education, now that is a consortium with Hopkins in Minnesota. Um, it's uh, moved into its own building uh, this year and uh, I actually have some different things I, I'm sorry. I actually changed this, um, I guess it didn't make it into this one. So let me just go back here if you don't mind, I apologize. Um, so yeah, Adult Options, it actually offered $9,000 in post-secondary scholarships to GED graduates since 2017. It ranks number one out of 42 in the state for highest percentage of our ABE students making skill gains. That was in 2018-19. And also in 2018-19, it ranked number four out of 42 in the state for the highest percentage of our ESL students making skill gains. So uh, it's a very high-quality program. It's a, all of, I mean, and those skill gains are for the consortium, um, you know, the whole consortium. But our teachers here in St. Louis Park are so dedicated, they love their students, they're very experienced, and our students get a wonderful, um, a wonderful program here. Um, our senior program, um, not, uh, 10 years ago when I started here, uh, the senior program is completely separate from the rest of community ed in that it didn't, uh, all of the classes that uh, were available through the senior program were only available to senior program members. You had to actually be a member to take those classes. Those classes were not included in our full catalog. It had, it had its own catalog called the Newscaster, which we still have. But over the years, what we've done is we've said, hey, you know, some, there might be like 40-year-olds who work second shift who might want to take some of our classes during the day. So we opened up all of our senior program classes during the day to anybody who wants to take them. It's just that if you're a senior program member, you just pay a reduced rate. And then we took all of our senior program classes and put them in the big community ed catalogs so everybody could see what, what, uh, what classes we have available during the day. We've opened the age range to include younger boomers, although we have now actually dropped it again to age 50. So I think that we have gone beyond boomers now and we are uh, going into Gen X. Um, we've created a Third Circle CX Subcommittee to uh, look at how do we increase participation in our programs at Lenox? And we've increased sponsorship opportunities to boost revenue. Project SOAR, our Adults with Disabilities Program, which is also a consortium with Minnetonka, Hopkins, and YZeta. Uh, in that program, we've um, increased participation quite a bit over the years. And we now partner with group homes and we bring programs to them. We were finding it was difficult sometimes for group uh, home particip- uh, participants to come to our classes because if they didn't have enough staff, they, they'd either have to bring everybody or nobody. So what we did is said, okay, well, we will come to you then and we will offer classes at your group home. And then we worked with student interns to develop a marketing uh, plan a couple of years ago that we are now using. So uh, leading for racial equity, we um, have been doing work in this area and different department areas are doing different things, but we do some things altogether. So under structural change, um, we started uh, nine years ago or so, started with the Equity Walks for our early childhood programs. And with that, uh, and with the um, the strategic plan layered with a racial equity plan, that's when we restructured those early childhood programs to the way we have them now, rather than the nine different programs. In our adult areas, we added free-for-all classes, sliding fee scale classes to address some possible barriers, our intentional practices to recruit and retain staff of color in Kids Place. And our Kids Place accreditation is also a big structural change. And that also is leading for racial equity because uh, there's a number of requirements around uh, providing culturally competent curriculum through the accreditation process and transportation options for ECFE and early learning families. What we did there is we've always had transportation available for our early learning students who are either on, uh, coming through on our school readiness or pathways funding. But sometimes if the parents didn't have transportation, they wouldn't be able to uh, participate in our program and our like family events in the evening. And we started like trying to send a school bus around, but you know, adults don't really want to get on a school bus in front of their house uh, in the evening. So what we've done is we're able to use Uber. And uh, we have some money set aside for uh, families who may want to come to our family events but don't have transportation. We uh, can send an Uber over to them. And same, we've had some families in our ECFE classes during the day who haven't had transportation. So we've been using uh, Uber and Lyft for those families as well. Uh, staff development, uh, all of our staff take Beyond Diversity and we've actually done it where we've done groups of staff too that take it together. So we're all in it at the same time and learning from each other. Um, we've, uh, a number of our program areas, we do book studies and our leadership team and in different program areas. Our early childhood staff, not all of them, but a number of them, went to a Black Lives Matters Symposium in Harlem in February. So they got that in right before COVID. And um, that was an amazing experience for all the people who participated in that. And um, they learned uh, from the preschools in Harlem how they teach culturally relevant um, teaching for, for young students. So it, they, it was just an amazing experience for them. And then we went out on COVID almost right after they came back, but they're still using what they are learning in their distance learning and they're excited to start using it for when they can come back and in-person learning. Our licensed staff have equity coaches and that sometimes benefits um, others of us. Uh, I know our, the equity coach for our early learning teachers um, actually helps us out. She comes to our, our early learning core team meetings and uh, very much helps the whole program. Um, we've partnered at the district level to offer a staff book study and that number of our um, our people, our staff have gone to the PEG Summit Conference. And in community development, um, through our adult uh, enrichment programs, we've uh, had a number of community conversations, so examples of viewing and discussion of 13th, we have a Native American video and discussion series. Um, and I don't know if any of you have had a chance to come to our IFtar educational experience, we would have had that uh, more recently, but of course with COVID, we weren't able to do that this year, but it's an amazing experience. Uh, we've had our Heart of the Matter community discussions, we partnered with the city in a race equity discussion. Uh, our staff have helped pilot uh, racial affinity groups for people of color who are staff in St. Louis Park. Um, we have our family engagement focus on building relationships and partnering and our early learning advisory council, intentional recruiting of parents of color. And we do, uh, have a Hope Speaks partnership with teachers in the district uh, to bring racial, racial equity work to our families. And we've done that, I think we've done it five times now, and every time we keep getting more participation. So that's a, that's a really amazing program that we can offer. Now during COVID-19, I just want to say, I, our staff just stepped up to COVID-19 and and all, as all district staff did, but we certainly did too in community education. People worked very hard um, to do what we could do uh, during this time. So of course, uh, you all know we had the free emergency childcare for tier one and tier two, emergency workers, but starting June 15th, we reopened Fee-Based Kids Place. Uh, so we have a number, we have about 200 school age care and a hundred and, like 120 preschool uh, kids uh, taking uh, in Kids Place now. Our early learning teachers, um, they, if you go onto our website, you can see this. They developed a 10-week distance learning curriculum. Every week they put something up and they translated it into um, into Spanish. And uh, it is like, it is literally like a curriculum with uh, that focused on language and math and art. And they also, if there were uh, pieces like uh, manipulatives and things that had to go along with that, they created kits and, um, and then had families come and pick them up. And if families couldn't come, they put them on the bus that the district had to bring them out to families. And then they were, they were making connections with families um, through this whole process. And then they were making connections with families through this whole process. Our youth enrichment offered online classes. Adult enrichment developed online classes. In our senior program, we created a calling tree. So they would have a way to call each other and check in with each other, so nobody would feel isolated. And there were some Zoom groups that were created. The Men's Club created a Zoom group. Tai Chi created a Zoom group. So there was attempts to keep some things going. The volunteer program, we created the Lenox Carrying Cards Partnership. And I know some of you actually signed up to do that, and so thank you very much for that. Adult Options in Education continued with their distance learning. It actually found that because students didn't have to come into the building, they actually had a higher level of attendance during distance learning because students could just come in from home and were able to do that. And Project SOAR, they had a SOAR From Home YouTube channel, and they created Home Kits to send home to people as well. So lastly, so moving forward, we, in fall of 2020, we are opening our new Early Learning Center. And we're so excited about that, and construction is on time and might even be done a little bit early. So that is very exciting. And of course, I talked about this before, but we are creating out-of-school time opportunities for elementary and middle school students. So before, before school at middle school and after school at elementary school. And it's really a chance for our Community Education Youth Enrichment Department to really shine with these new start times. And of course, Kids Place too will, you know, have new, you know, as we've talked about Kids Place a number of times. But Kids Place, of course, will have to be really leaning into our new start times at the elementary schools. We continue to follow guidance to open community education programs. So we open them up as we can. So we've opened Kids Place. We're opening aquatics starting in July. We're going to have summer, in-person summer learning in place starting in July. We're going to just start like slowly putting out some adult enrichment classes. And we're sort of like, you know, following all the guidance that's out there so we can start opening up our programs. And then we do plan to, even if we can come back in person, to start offering hybrid in-person and virtual classes. We've learned a lot through doing things virtually. We want to continue on being able to provide programs in that way. So, and I'm just going to say then, just stay tuned for exciting developments in community education programs as you all move forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Lisa, for that thorough, to say the least, report on the events of Community Ed, the activities of Community Ed. Does anybody have any questions for Lisa?
I don't have a question, just a quick comment. Lisa, thank you for all of your work. I mean, a lot of that stuff with me being fairly new, didn't know. But it really looks like you have made huge amounts of progress, especially in the areas of racial equity and trying to get our kids ready for, and actually all stages of their life, citizens of St. Louis Park. So thank you. You are going to be very missed. You know, we have faith in the new person, but I think that they have a very large pair of shoes to fill. So good luck and thank you for all of your work in St. Louis Park. Thank you.
Karen here with one thing that was part of our Board Book Packet was the Volunteer Program Annual Report. It's...
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. I apologize for not mentioning that. Yeah.
No, but we really need to think, so when it was a collaboration with the city, at times it got clunky, but I felt like people worked really hard to make it work. But this is so incredible, what volunteers do for our programs and our schools. And, and just the student support one, the value of it. $131,000 worth of service provided by our volunteers to our students. That is just so astounding and wonderful. And I'm really grateful that we have a mechanism to get people connected with something that enhances and energizes their spirit. Because in turn, that causes a spark with kids, and it lets kids know there's another adult in the community who knows me and cares about me. And I know we do the little volunteer flower at check-in. You know, that didn't work out so hot with COVID-19 this year. But I really hope that we can make this annual report very prominent with our social media campaign and on the website. Because yes, of course, it's your work, Lisa, as the director. But the cumulative work of all the volunteers, and I just highlighted one dimension of it, there's more. There's breakouts in every area. And just really want to say thank you for creating a space to have excellence in so many dimensions related to volunteer opportunities and what it brings to our schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
This Heather, I just want to make a comment as well, Lisa. Lisa, like Laura and Karen said, your work is just tremendous. And I think your report really highlights just how much work Community Ed does. And it's sort of the backbone of everything because you reach the youngest kids in our community all the way up to the oldest people in our community. And it is just such a valuable service, sort of beyond, you know, the racial equity piece and the intergenerational piece that Karen was kind of talking about there. And you've just done such a tremendous job. And I can't thank you enough for the work you've done in St. Louis Park, and you will be missed. But you go ahead and enjoy that retirement, okay? You've earned it.
All right, I will. Thank you.
This is Ken, and yes, it's been work good working with you, Lisa. And you've done some really great work over the 12 years I've been here. And earlier than that, because my first encounter with you had been with ECFE. And that was a great experience. Still have friends that live actually across the street now from us, from way back then. But questions I have for you. The Uber cost, that was, that's great. That was great that you were able to get certain people, I mean, people there at the spaces that they needed to be at. And I'm sure it was more efficient than sending buses around. Because buses, you know, they were like $300 a shot, right? Three plus. So there's just, I think that was a great, I don't even know the numbers, but I'm sure you saved money versus sending buses around. So that's a good idea. And then I was wondering, on the Black Lives Matter piece that your people went out to, out east to do, did we collaborate with the city or anybody else with that, or was it a consortium you went?
That was actually, that was our early learning, and that actually came from, I'm not sure. Sarah Riker, who is our Equity Coach, she heard about it, and the symposium itself was free. And so it was just the cost of the travel out there and of course, the hotel. And so we did not collaborate with the city on that. That was very, very specifically for early childhood. They went to preschool classes and that kind of thing. So it was, it was very specifically for early childhood.
Okay, thank you. Enjoy that retirement.
Thank you.
Anna, Colin?
Yeah, I just wanted to pop in and say thanks, Lisa, and these guys have already said it better than I could. But just appreciate your work so much. And just one note that popped up in your presentation was that you said that it was the, it was Adult Options that you said had more engagement this year with the distance learning because they were able to kind of pop in.
Yeah.
That's awesome. And I hope, that's one of those things that I think we've been seeing. Hey, how could we be doing things different or better forever and not go back to the old thing that wasn't working as well? So I really hope that's something that gets taken forward from this time. And I love that program, and I was sad to miss, well, we all missed GED graduation this year because I think it'll be held, it'll be held next year. But thank you. We are staying tuned, and we know you'll be cheerleading for us from the Northern Moore Metro. And you'll be missed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Try to keep myself brief. It's a challenge for me sometimes. That's why I'm holding back probably. But I was going to say that, you know, my experience has been a lot on that childhood program and my son going through Kids Place and just seeing sort of development of that effort over time. And really sort of feeling like, oh yeah, look at this. We have staff that have stayed here. We have continued growth. It isn't just like, oh, we're doing a random field trip. But things felt more theme-driven and really appreciated that. And I've gotten better at understanding what Community Ed is all about. I'd get the brochure and be like, there's so much stuff going on. It's almost intimidating. And so it takes a little time to sort of, you know, get to know it a little bit more. And so I feel grateful that I've gotten to do that. And I'm grateful that we're, just like anything else in this community or anything else in education, it grows and it evolves. And I'm glad that we continue to do that. And we look at things like race equity and something like Community Ed where we might be, oh, that's a schools to figure that out, but how seriously we take that in something like race equity. So thank you for driving that, being part of that. Thank you for your service. Thanks for being dedicated to St. Louis Park schools and our community. It's just, as the name implies, it's Community Ed, and we should see some benefit in our community. And I think we probably, that volunteer report probably hints at some of the benefits we see. But I think the benefits go way beyond what's just in that report. So thank you.
Well, thank you very much, everybody. And I just want to say that one of the things really over the last 10 years is that community education is so much more supported by the district, I feel, than, you know, over the last 10 years, the support we get from the district now is really great. And then with the race equity work that is happening in this district and the school board taking this on in such a strong way, I just think it's just really exciting what's going to be happening in St. Louis Park. So I'll be watching.
Thank you so much, Lisa. We wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Okay, next up Superintendent O'Sai for the Out-of-School Time Update.
Chair of Time Back, members of the board, this evening I would like to provide a brief update on the work that we've been doing connected to out-of-school time planning. And thank you, Lisa, for highlighting some of the work connected to Community Ed. And one of the pieces that you'll recognize, as I share a little bit, is that really our Community Ed team is truly at the center of the work that we're going to be doing to provide out-of-school time programming for our elementary learners as we head into the 2020-2021 school year. So thank you for that presentation, Lisa. It's hard to believe that, you know, almost 15, 16 months ago, as the school boards, you all made a decision for us to adjust our start times. And there's been so much that has transpired during that time. And here we are, fast forward to June, our last board meeting of the 2019-2020 school year. And we'll be implementing new start times next school year. And I know over the next several weeks and months that it's going to be really important for us to remind our community and our families about this start time change as I, you know, there is a likelihood that some of this may have been lost with everything else that we've been dealing with as it relates to our response to the current global pandemic that we're dealing with. But because of this start time change, it has really required us to rethink how we are providing out-of-school time program specifically for our youngest learners. And because of that, we spent the early part of this year convening a group of community stakeholders and really examining the programming, the menu of options that we need to provide for our elementary students that support them from a social, emotional, and academic standpoint, being that there would be more time after school for students to learn and engage. And what we've done since the last time we had an opportunity to share information with you are is get more detail connected to the implementation of elementary out-of-school time programming. So the last time that we were together, I shared with you that we were still looking at developing a system for transportation. I'm excited to share tonight that we've developed that system and will be able to provide transportation to students who participate in out-of-school time programming at our elementary sites. We've secured six buses for elementary out-of-school time transportation. And those buses, those activity routes at our elementary schools will occur at 4:00 PM every single day. So if our students and families choose to participate in out-of-school time programming, and it's important for me to mention that this is separate from our Kids Place programming, right? So students who participate in Kids Place programming, our school-age childcare programming will resume their normal transportation, either being, you know, by being picked up by their parent or guardian. But for all of our other students that are staying in after-school programming connected to the robust menu of options that we'll be providing, I'm excited to say that we will be able to provide them transportation. And what we've really been working to do is make sure that, because these are our earliest and our youngest learners, that we're able to provide safe passage for them from our programming to their homes. So as part of implementing this transportation system, we're going to be incorporating a GPS tracking system that allows students to use an ID card per se to log, to sign into the bus and to sign off when they get home. And that ID card will notify their parent or guardian that they're en route. They made it on the bus, they're en route, and when they arrive at the stop that they're off the bus. And I'm excited about this because we're really looking at other ways to utilize this technology. And we're exploring even at the elementary level, how we can use this technology to support with our pandemic response, right? Because one of the ways that germs are spread by the touching of the keypad in the cafeteria. And we believe that we may be able to utilize this same technology to help our elementary learners, you know, scan for lunch in the cafeteria. So we're continuing to explore ways to expand this technology just outside of the transportation. But the piece that I did want to mention, which was certainly a critical component in our investigation of transportation, was the costs connected to this. And we were able to develop a transportation system for activity routes for our elementary learners that would be cost-neutral in nature. So based on our current transportation services that we're receiving now and the current costs connected to that, these additional six buses would be redirected from other areas of our organization to allow us to do this in a cost-neutral manner. The next piece connected to the elementary out-of-school time that I just wanted to provide an update on was the programming piece, you know. Over the past couple of months, we've made a decision. We really shifted the direction we were going from having these be local, school-specific programming options to more of a global, Community Ed-led and run-generated programming model. And we did that for a couple of reasons. One, we wanted to ensure that all of our students had access to the programming. And as we were thinking about it more localized, what we kept running into was this issue that if we had some programs that were for pay, other programs that were free, that we inherently would create a system or structure that would, you know, kind of create haves and have-nots. And, you know, and what we know, at least here in St. Louis Park and in the state of Minnesota, that a lot of that race is reflected in some of that. And we could be unintentionally creating programming that would be racially predictable. So what we've decided to do was include this under the Community Ed model and really to try to create consistency in programming, create access for all. But that would allow us to use a fee-based program where we could create a sliding scale fee to really meet each of our students and their families where they're at from a financial standpoint so that we don't have to turn anyone away. Now certainly, there will be some costs associated with that, and we'll learn a lot as we implement this school year. And that's why in the budget that Patricia will present to you later on this evening, there are, there is some contingency set aside for start time implementation. And some of that contingency would help us as we really work to implement and provide programming that all students can access that is not predictable in a student's socioeconomic status level. We are planning on offering at each site two to three out-of-school time program options for families. Those would be offered on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Fridays. That, the program and offerings will be coming out in our, in our normal fall calendar. So as you know, each year, we offer a fall calendar where we offer all of our programs and options. And those programs and options will come out available to families during that time. And it is our hope and goal to make sure that each trimester, that our students and families have options for different out-of-school time programs. And eventually, we believe that we'll be able to, once we get this, you know, kind of get experience with implementing this type of program, that as we head into the next school year, that we would be able to really share the full year worth of programming with our students and families. But this year being that it's new, we're really wanting to be intentional and making sure that we have enough staff to help support with the courses. I was excited to hear yesterday when we met as a team that we've had already seven, approximately 70 teachers express interest in teaching classes throughout the school year. So we believe that this change in creating... we believe that this this change in creating earlier end times for our elementary learners will engage our elementary teachers um in ways that they haven't been able to engage in the past. Um as you all are fully aware, this is a very familiar model to you, we are continuing to really focus on four areas connected to our out of school time programming. One of those will be the the childcare piece, which is our 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 school aged childcare Kids Place, and then health and fitness, academics and arts, and as you all remember, these were the themes or areas that came out of the task force work that included parents, guardians, community members, staff, teachers, and students. So I'm gonna just speak a little bit about Kids Place, but I know Lisa's, you know, did a tremendous job explaining Kids Place and what it is, so I just really wanted to highlight the nuance that will be different next year, so as part of this change in start times, I know the school board, but also many of our community members were really adamant about having an option and more flexibility around a tiered um school aged childcare model, and I'm excited to that we're still moving forward with that, and we'll be able to offer families and ca- um our our students this tiered option where the first tier would end at four thirty, and then the second tier would end at its normal in time of six P M for student pickup. And you know, as as we've been in, you know, working to design this over the past couple of months, there have been a couple of questions that come up, what does this mean for me, right, you have not been able to share with us which days programs be offered, what programs will be offered, and what we're really wanting families to understand is that um there's not, we're not expecting or requiring families to sign up for every single day, but what we are asking families to do is to develop a consistent schedule, so even if that's Monday, Wednesday, Friday, that they're signing up for Kids Place, that that be consistent throughout the year so that we can staff the programming, um staff the program uh accordingly. And what we also want to let families know is that at any point, if you sign up and you no longer want to participate, that there's there's you can you can cancel at any point. And um certainly, if there's space available, if there's a need for you to come back, you know, you know, they'll certainly be willing to take students back, the the challenge is at this point, because we don't know um exactly what the enrollment will be like, we can't guarantee space if a family is enrolled and then decides to step out to participate in some of the the out of school time programming, so what we generally tell families is that if you need childcare, that um you should sign up for Kids Place because the 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 other option around the out of school time programming that will be offered is not necessarily designed for childcare, is designed for enrichment. Feel free to stop me at any point, I'm just gonna continue to work through these slides, but the the next piece that I wanted to just provide an update on was the work that was done at the middle school this this winter, uh connected to middle school out of school time programming, and we, as well, similar to the elementary that facilitated and convened the task force that really looked at the the before and after school time and focused on trying to figure out a way to create uh structures and systems for academic support while um being in alignment with creating opportunities for teachers to collaborate um during the workday. And ultimately, what was decided by the the task force that came together and then later approved by the staff was to create an option where one day a week, Wednesday mornings, there would be um before school teacher help provided, and that would be um the day in which the mini clubs that they offer at the middle school would occur as well. Transportation would be provided for that, and similar to the elementary um activity routes, we were able to figure out a strategy that would allow us to shuttle students from one of our elementary schools so that we would not need to add additional routes or buses, so this too would be a cost neutral strategy that we would be able to apply from a transportation standpoint, and we would still continue to offer extended clubs and athletics and activities after school at the middle school level, and would provide an activity bus as we have in the past. So I I wanted to share that that um that that framework with you and let you know that the last time we were together, this was one of the options that the team was considering, and this was the 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 option that was ultimately um selected by um district level um administration and the the teacher team at the middle school that was working on the the out of school time programming. So s- a a few details about about this, I I shared that there would be transportation provided for students and that we would certainly have a late activity bus. The the piece similar to elementary out of school time is that we're really trying to bring community education to the center of what we're doing, recognizing that as a school district, you know, uh from this from this philosophy of Mbuntu, that we're all required to work collectively to meet the needs of our students, and I I really appreciate community ed for stepping up in a large way and engaging um our 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 site leaders in creating and and providing activities and opportunities for students to engage in re- enrichment and um and um even, you know, childcare for for that matter, and one of the things that we're exploring based on the recommendation from the task force was to provide before school uh care or childcare for some of our middle level learners, and our community ed team is really right now in the process of developing options for families that are interested in that, and we'll we'll be planning on offering that to families in the fall, so if a family or a parent or guardian has to leave for work, you know, early in the morning and is not comfortable with living a sixth grader or seventh grader at home, there would be opportunities for that parent or guardian to drop drop their child off at the middle school, and their child would be able to engage in some before school programming. Now, it's important to note that there would not be transportation provided for that programming, but similar to how we do school aged childcare at the elementary level, parents could pick up and, you know, or excuse me, drop off their their students for that type of programming. And it's it's also important for me to to note that students will still have access to um the the same types of activities and clubs that they had access to and um under our previous start time. So as I as I think about next steps, and as we continue to plan here over the summer months to prepare for the start of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year, we'll be finalizing staffing for both the elementary and middle school out of school time programs, we're really looking at creative ways to to combine positions and modify positions so that we can um utilize staffing effectively and not add where we don't have to, but utilize um schedules and opportunities to to be efficient. We are gonna be finalizing the out of school time course offerings and sliding scale fee to ensure that we create access and opportunity for all of our learners that want to participate. We are going to be securing and then testing the um the 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 GPS tracking system that we'll be using for those elementary um after school activity routes, and then finalizing the structure for out of school time snacks as we anticipate, you know, every single day having approximately three hundred kids at each of our sites, staying, engaging, and being enriched in in programming, um being offered through our teachers and um community educators. So I'll stop now and and open it up for any questions that you may have.
Anyone?
Mary. Comment here, um so thank you um for presenting all this information, it's it's good to see, and the um as somebody who participated in some of these discussions early on and about, you know, start times and everything, I think the one thing that I'm most excited about is we protected fairly well integrity of making sure that our middle school students get that sleep that they need. That was one of the big takeaways that I had was just how important that is, and one of the trade offs was gonna be, well, did we just start shifting everything to the morning in terms of activities and things like that? And it looks like we're saying, you know, um we still want to protect that as much as possible, we've made some allowances for people to have some of that engagement as um, you know, with their classmates and and how to do that efficiently, and then how to also sort of help with some of the other issues that people have mentioned. I sort of take issue with the with the term before school care. I guess that that's probably what it's truly is, I said, I also heard you say before school programming, and I think.
Dylan, can I just say um, actually, we would call it, you know, before school clubs.
Sure, great, that's good, and I get it because some part of it is it's probably care to a certain degree, because there are people who have challenges with sort of um, you know, uh like if they have a kid at home, the kid, you know, getting to school, all of those things can become a challenge, so there's an a- aspect of care, and good to hear that we're thinking of clubs or programming, because we do, we did see that in the research, there are some kids who wake up early in the morning, there are some kids who like that sort of activity and like to get blood flowing and doing things like that, so that those were some of my big takeaways, I probably have tons more thoughts, but I just wanted to show that, most importantly, that I saw how much we were protecting that, because I heard that from so many parents too, about how I want to make sure my kids could sleep, I want to make sure that they get sleep, and we saw how important it was when we looked at the research too for healthy kids at that time, um at that part of their life, how important it is, and 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 it just plays plays into so many things in terms of their success, so thank you.
Thank you, and I I um will certainly accept your friendly amendment around the use of the word care. I I think I use that word because that is specifically what the task force, one of the task force members was requesting, but I don't, I think we can modify that language moving forward.
Can I ask a question?
No, I want you to go.
Mine's quick. Thank you for all the work that you've done on this, this looks great, the information is very well presented, thank you so much to the committee and to Superintendent Ossai, but my quick question is, when you mentioned middle school students will still have access to the same activities and clubs, does that include the access to the high school sports? Being that I know some of the teams really depend on those middle schoolers to make up the rest of the team, so I'm just curious about that.
Thank you for that question, and um yes, that that is what that means, I know our athletic directors, both at the middle and high school levels, have been collaborating over the past several months to ensure that that be the case, specifically in those activities um or sports, excuse me, where middle level um participation is so critical to the success of the program, and all of those coaches have been intentional about modifying the start time of their practices, or adding on time to ensure that middle level athletes can still participate and be a part of those teams.
Thank you, that's great.
So my question, thank you, Aspen, for this information, it's great. My question's around the chip, that uh card, I'm I'm a techie guy, so um that's interesting. Is that part of us, or is it part of the bussing system?
Yeah, so I I see Patricia, she is um our resident expert in the use of this technology, I I do before allow Patricia to share, I do want to just acknowledge the work that she and our transportation consultant Gutu Melkey from K twelve Transportation have done, not only around, you know, looking and seeking out this technology, but really trying to find cost effective ways to help us safely transport our students before and after school, connected to um these these enrichment and um activities that we're we're working to provide our students, so Patricia, would you be willing to talk a little bit about Tyler Drive and what it is?
Yeah, yeah, Tyler Technologies is a it's a software that's connected to our school bus routing system, so it's a part of, it's the same company, Tyler Technologies, and um Tyler Drive then provides this option for um school districts, so there's a a third vendor then, or another vendor then that we work with to to um actually get the cards printed and the R F I D um technology into the into the cards themselves, so we we started looking around for something that would help us just make sure our little ones were safe and that parents could track where they were at, and as it turns out, um there's also a relationship between our food service vendor, WordWare, and Tyler Technologies, so that we can use that same badge technology to um help us with our with our security around and our safety for students at in the lunch lines um in the fall. So it's a it's a third party vendor that we are acquiring, we are in conversation with our school bus vendors, because we will have to do some training of the six or so staff members that will run those after school routes and have the the pads, we we will own everything as a district.
Okay, so we own the the tech, we'll we'll buy the technology from this company?
Mm-hmm, we'll buy the technology, there are pads and and little holders that will go on the school buses, little mounts that will go on the school buses, we started conversation with them, and then we own the routing software, so then we'll own this add on to that system.
Cool, so then essentially, our little people will have um student IDs.
Yeah, it the one, you know, the types we've looked at look very much like ours.
Okay.
With the breakaway, with the breakaway um lanyard, so we have a few choices in that, and we're and they should have photos on them as well, we're working on how to best do that.
Very nice, okay. Then you'll also look into the replacement costs and everything for when they lose their ID and how to defend back, okay.
Yeah, and all the plans for that, yes.
Can I ask a quick follow up, I'm sure that we've thought about this, but for the sake of it and for other people that, like, there's um when we say tracking data and stuff like that, I think there's probably data privacy concerns too, or information, or that we'd be tracking people at their homes or things like that, so I'm sure that's been worked in there, but I just want to acknowledge that, that that we've looked at that.
Yes, thank you, I I don't know if that was just a reminder, but yes, thank you.
Somebody to acknowledge that, that that's that.
Yes, absolutely.
Any other questions?
Not a question, but a statement, I think it's an important part that we have the ownership of that product, so we can manage all of that and use our own data practices to keep all that secure. I like that part of it.
Okay, seeing no one else chiming in, thank you very much Superintendent Ossai. And Patricia, while you are unmuted, let's move on to the budget discussion.
Yes, good evening, um so we're here tonight, it's really the second reading of the budget, so I'm gonna try not to belabor it too much, but I do want to just make sure there's some important parts of the budget this year, as always, but um this year is a little different um than usual. So I just, I will review some of the things we talked about last time and um just highlight a couple of changes that were made to the budget. So the purpose is to just review our recommended budget for board action tonight, knowing that the board has met several times with different components of the budget, and you can see that in the in the timeline that's in the budget book. There's several assumptions, yeah, you could just bring them all in, the last one is is um other. There's a couple of lines under that, so I just want to review these quickly, there's a two percent basic funding formula increase already in law, so that's not an assumption, um you know, that's not a wild assumption or a guess, that's what's in current law. We have our enrollment assumption um basically fitting with our cohort survival model, so in normal times, this is what our enrollment would look like, so we appear it appears that we will be up thirty four students, or that's what we're budgeting for. And we have no increases in any of our fees or lunch prices this year, we're holding class sizes at the same level as the current year or had as they have been um for several years. There's a two contingencies, one is a normal contingency that we would have in place, two hundred thousand dollars, this addresses class size or any other unforeseen needs that might arise during a school year. And as Superintendent Ossai said earlier, we are holding another half million dollar um contingency that that will help us cover costs that might result from start time changes. And we are, of course, keeping in mind the six percent fund balance minimum that the board has required in policy, and then there's two other areas that sort of fall into this other category that um we include employee contract settlements um at historical rates for any unsettled contracts, but I believe good work, um Mr. Crier, all of our contracts are settled for next year. Um, and we do have a market based increase in transportation costs, we um did make an adjustment once we had our contracts signed with both of our vendors, there's a small adjustment in the budget as compared to what you saw last time to match what's in the in the transportation contract, and I had foreshadowed that we had an eighty five percent increase in our insurance costs that was not built into the budget, we didn't have the information in time, that's for property insurance um and liability insurance, and it's linked to some unsettled feelings in the insurance marketplace that because of all of the things happening with COVID and other issues happening in the world, that there might be increased property and liability um costs for insured parties, and so we are part of a consortium, um and so we, as a group of school districts, have an eighty five percent increase built in, so we've added about three hundred and eleven thousand dollars to the purchase services budget compared to what you saw last time. That will cover the insurance and um transportation changes. I just want to, on the next slide, walk through some assumptions. I just want to, on the next slide, walk through some assumptions around COVID-19. The last one says fund balance drops. Okay. So we didn't include any assumptions around COVID-19. And I know the board knows this, but I just want to repeat it. We brought the budget forward as if it were a normal year coming up. And we will do, I imagine that we will do more than one budget update next year as we learn more about, well, when we know at the end of July, what kind of condition we'll be in going to school this fall. And then maybe again later in the year. But just to remember that there's several very plausible impacts that could happen. We could have fewer kindergarten students if parents make different decisions about starting in the fall. And if we lost 50 kindergarten students from our projection, we, that would cost $380,000 in revenue. If we had another 50 student decline in other grade levels, $417,000. If the state, because the budget is tied at the state level, were to prorate state aid just by 2% and give us only 90, 98% of our state aid, that's nearly a million dollars, $909,000. If 2% of our taxes became uncollectible, that would be $402,000 for a combined total of $2.1 million. And I don't think anything on that list is implausible. I think they're, they're all plausible alone or together. So what that means is that our fund balance would drop from 11.49% to 11.49% from 14.89%. And I want to make sure that we're very transparent with our community and with our board, that we know these things are possible. We didn't try to guess which ones could occur and build it into the budget. But I wanted everyone to be very well aware that we still have sufficient fund balance to meet board policy and to meet our payrolls and to meet any unexpected needs so that we don't have to rush into making decisions. And a budget is a place where we can really make decisions that aren't in alignment with our racial equity work and that we might cut things that that seem like the right thing to do. But knee jerk reactions are often parts of structures that have racist outcomes. So this helps us to really be planful about the way we would move forward with what are going to be budget cuts as we move into a year from now. This is the front cover of the fancy budget book that is online. Thank you, Colin, for reading it. And you will notice that I fixed the typo already and Matt Thomas got it back online for us. So Aston, I just wanted, just for the board, if everyone was, didn't get a chance to get out there, on, under departments, if you go to business services and along the left hand side, if you click on budget documents, there's our brand new budget book. On top of the list, it's this final budget book. And all the parts that are in your board packet are in here. So there's just the few edits from two weeks ago. So it shouldn't be too much more complicated. There's a few more pieces of data that we got pulled together in the informational section. But of course, we started with the strategic plan because that's what our board, that's what our budget is supporting. And really, if you wanted to go through the executive summary and then that fund balance, that summary fund balance page, those are the parts of the budget. You could lift those three pages and you could know everything about the budget in those three pages, stopping with this one. But there's all kinds of details in the budget book and backup materials that we've determined with the Finance Advisory Committee, where the, where the documents are artifacts that we continue to update so that our community and board could get used to seeing the same types of materials. So you can go back to the presentation, but I do encourage you to read the budget book. It's the only book I've ever written, it's a budget book. And it's got some great information about the school district in it. So then we've, it's got all, all of these several sections. So there's an executive summary, which I said is liftable and it could tell the story. There's an introductory section that goes through a little bit more detail about how revenues and expenses are produced. There's an organizational section that includes information about the board, information about our school buildings and about the staff. And then there's a financial section with some charts and graphs. And then an informational section, which is filled with details that the board has approved along the way, like the levy document or debt service schedules, all of those things that the board has seen and approved that helped build the budget. This just depicts the budget in total. So you can get just an overview of, the top line is the general fund in total. That second line, that's italicized, are the unreserved general fund balances. So you can see what the, what the totals are and percentages. And then all of the other operating and non-operating funds of the school district. And then on the next slide, just to remind the board that we've got great long term stability built into some of our structures. We've got a 10-year operating referendum in place, voter approved, a 10-year capital projects levy for technology that's been voter approved. And will be reaching the end of its life in a couple of years. We've got long-term facilities maintenance funding in place. And we've got another post-employment benefits trust in place that helps us to cover the costs from old contracts. We will be entering into a cost containment exercise or not even exercise. We will be containing costs this fall as we enter school, no matter which way we look at it. Doesn't mean we can't spend money on new things and redirect funds to other things that are more important today than they, than something else that might have been important. But we will have to contain costs this year and hopefully deliver a budget that is better than this in the end. And then really work toward budget cutting for the following year is what we are predicting. We've got a lot of budget efficiencies that are already built in because this is a really, it's a staff that pays attention to the budget and pays attention to being efficient and making changes across the board, all of our staff. There's energy savings that are coming from all of these deferred maintenance projects that we've been engaged in and our construction projects. We've got an OPEB levy that the board began with taxes payable in 2020. So that starts with next year's budget. We've got a self-funded medical program that helps us to contain costs and level out our, our increases in medical costs. And we're focusing on enrollment as much as we can in this strange time to make sure that the families that live in St. Louis parks and their children here. And then always, we have to keep an eye on the legislature and advocate as much as we can for funding for our schools. Next steps, once the budget is approved tonight, we'll be implementing the budget and start immediately with cost containment, containment measures over the summer. There might be a couple of budget updates next year, probably as early as September. And then we'll start the work on the 2022 budget with taxes payable in '21. And you can see, there's another budget update for this year. But we wanted to put this visual together to show you that we sort of swim around in three fiscal years all of the time in business services so that you kind of keep in your head that we're going to close out the year that we're ending right now. We'll be really implementing the '21 budget and tightening up as much as we can and then beginning to build what the 2022 budget will look like. So that's the presentation and we are recommending that the board later in its action items adopt the budget as presented.
Thank you, Patricia. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, hearing no one chime in, we will move on. Thank you very much. Okay, next up, policy development. First reading of the gender inclusion policy.
A cheer to Tom back, members of the board. This evening, as a part of our annual review of the gender inclusion policy, I would just like to provide an update regarding our implementation of, of the different areas of the policy. And, you know, I would like to start off with the purpose of the presentation. And again, that's to provide an update regarding our implementation. And, you know, our, our policy really requires us as a school district to make sure that we're providing access to programs and facilities. And the, the framework for which, you know, we do that is highlighted here around creating respectful environments that are enhancing to students, regardless of their gender identity or expression, making sure that we are really creating space for students and their preferred pronouns and names, access to facilities that students are safe and have privacy and making sure that we're examining activities to ensure that they don't have any bias based on gender preference or identity. And the same from an academic standpoint as well. And as, as we look at this, I, I struggle with how to define our work in this area. And last year, I think one of the columns I had was implemented, which was misleading, right? Because similar to the work that we do in racial equity, I don't believe that you ever arrive at full, complete consciousness. But instead, you continue to work and seek multiple perspective and refine the practices that you're doing. So in many respects, I should, I would have been better off just kind of having a blank slate and suggesting that this, these are the things that we're focusing on to create, you know, inclusive environments for all of our students. But, you know, we continue to make sure that we're respecting the safety and privacy of our students pursuant to Policy 515. We make sure that we're providing all students opportunity to participate in co-curricular activities and extracurricular activities. And we're currently following the guidance and direction from the Minnesota State High School League. We have been, even prior to this policy going into effect, allowing students to access facilities that are aligned with their, their gender identity. One of the pieces that's, that you'll see different from last year, where we've made some progress on, is updating of district forms and information systems to accommodate preferred names and pronouns. This has been a really heavy lift for us as an organization, just really making sure that we can get all of our systems to talk together. And while we still are working through specific details, I'm proud to say that we're much further along than we were a year ago. And that as we even move to have enrollment of students be online, that those systems are being mindful of students' preferred name and gender expression. And we're really making sure that our systems help support the work that we need to do here in this policy. I would suggest that we continue to identify and address students by their preferred names and pronouns and that we are, have been working. And one of the things that Patrick and I have recently talked about is that we have a tremendous process right now where we are reviewing different curriculum and program areas. And that as a part of that, we have to continue to be mindful of ensuring that in, in the courses that we're offering, that we're not unintentionally and or intentionally, for that matter, separating students, you know, based on gender, unless there's some form of legitimate pedagogical reasoning behind that. So as we continue to work and try to make sure that our staff have the knowledge, skill and will to adhere to the expectations of this policy, we have to continue to provide professional development. And I, and I think that that looks differently, you know, across the board. And it doesn't always have to be us bringing in, you know, a keynote from gender spectrum. It could be work done at the site level around in, in ensuring that staff understand, you know, how to make sure that they're utilizing the technology, Power School and other tools to locate students' preferred names. And it's just important that we are always creating opportunities for, for staff to enhance their, their development in that area. And I would suggest something that you all have been committed to as a board is ensuring that as we're looking at our policies, right? I know there's been a lot of work that this year and past years where there's been language change to be in alignment with this, this policy. So as I think about the next steps, one of the things that I, has been really impactful for me as, you know, we are living in a world right now where there's a greater awareness of how race impacts people of color, specifically black people in this country, is that as I've reflected on the development and implementation of this policy, one of the pieces that I would suggest was missing for me as a leader, was a true isolation of race in this policy. And specifically, as I think about how transgender black females in this country are murdered at unprecedented rates in the life expectancy of them, I, I think it would be important to pause for a second and reflect on, well, what does that mean for the students here in St. Louis Park? So part of my work over the, the next school year will really be to isolate race in this policy and to think about what is the lived experience for our, our, you know, our, our students of color who, you know, may not have a binary gender expression or gender identity. And I would suggest that as we, as I led to help support the development of this policy, that I was not intentional in that. And I believe that in order to truly make sure that we are supporting the most marginalized of our students, that we have to isolate race in that process. We'll certainly continue to create opportunities for professional development for staff. While we've made progress in, in many of our forms, I'm confident that there are so many, the thing about public education systems, there are so many forms that, you know, I, I had a parent earlier this school year email me a form like, hey, this was something that was given me to fill out and it was not appropriate, right? So I, I'm confident that we'll continue to find forms and update those forms. And it's, we're going to have to work hard to get out in front of, you know, the next time we get to start the school year, having our staff go through each form and really make sure that we're not sending things out that don't align with, with the policy language here. And, you know, again, continuing to review curriculum programming as connected to our program and curriculum review, curriculum review cycles. And as we, and you all as a board, continue to review policy, making sure that the, the language that we're using is, is neutral from a, from a gender standpoint. So I'm going to just stop there and open it up for any questions. But what I, what I am thankful to be able to share with you this evening is that we continue to make progress. Now, as I started off, are we at a point of arrival where we are, you know, 100% conscious, 100% of the time? I would suggest not, but I think that would be inauthentic to suggest at any point that we as an organization and would, would, would be in that place because we have to be continual learners and we need to base our response on the needs of the stakeholders that were responsible for keeping safe and making sure that their, their, their rights are protected here in St. Louis Park. So I'll pause there and answer any questions that you may have for me.
Superintendent Ossai, I just wanted to start by saying, thank you very much for pointing out that, the miss, frankly. And it was, you know, I take ownership of that because I was on the board when we implemented this policy or adopted this policy, I should say. And we did not consider the intersectionality and the heightened impacts on our students of color, as you mentioned, particularly our black students and our blacks, transgender students who identify as female. And that is absolutely something I'm grateful to you for bringing more awareness and intentionality around that over this coming year. And I believe that Vice Chair Casey is going to be discussing and introducing some language tonight to specifically put into the gender inclusion policy that just highlights that awareness and creates the intention around being more mindful about the, as you said, the lived experience of our students. So thank you for that. Does anybody else have any questions on the implementation of gender inclusion policy? As you know, we have in the policy, annual update from Superintendent Ossai as the, the policy is continuing to be rolled out within our site.
Karen has one question.
Yeah.
A concern I have is that as we continue to finish out the remodeling of our buildings, especially at the middle school, I know we just got done at the high school. But I do think there are some areas where we could be more thoughtful. And I did hear from some people at the middle school that it's, it's been kind of hard to get some easy fixes done that would make a difference for our students. And so just as we honor the real investments that our community made in allowing us to redo our buildings for 21st century learning or next century learning, that the space, the environment, it, it's, it's crucial that we get it right and, and provide all the access, especially related to gender equity. And I want to touch a little bit more on professional development. We had a wonderful kickoff, right? And I was there and a lot of our staff were there. I, I'm not sure if we have that on film to. I, I'm not sure if we have that on film to make that available to our new staff who didn't have that opportunity to participate in that kickoff session. Um, but if we could find a way to recapture that, to kind of help set the tone and understanding of people who may not have been with us on this journey for as long as I personally have been on this journey since my twenty four year old entered the high school as a ninth grader. That's how long I've been working on this. Um, but a- and and I, I do believe it's implementing, you know, and it's um, it's active verb. But we also do need to start thinking seriously about the accountability piece for when the adults don't do their part to make the implementation happen in a timely fashion. And I don't think it's um unreasonable when you think about the lived experience of our students. When you think about the percentage of their time with us and middle school and high school is, is where we have a lot of emergence or um transition times, right? It's not only transition academically, but for some of our students, um, that is the transition time with gender expression. And so we can't wait for the adults to get on board to make this work happen. And at some point, I'd like to see serious accountability for um active embracing of this particular policy. And like we ask for people for their own racial equity journey, right? It's on me to do my learning. Um, it's also on me to continue to do this learning, but I'm gonna challenge the staff. It's on you to do this. And if you haven't read the policy, there's absolutely no excuse not to have read it. It's on the website. So um, I, I'm gonna leave it there, but there, there, I want people to understand we take this very, very seriously. You cannot brush it off or let it go or think, I don't have to deal with this now. You have to deal with it now, people. And I, I'm gonna leave it at that.
Um, I, I, I don't know if we were looking for a response, but I would um say, thank, I, 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 I believe your recommendation around filming the video, we do have that filmed. And I, I know we certainly can figure out a way to incorporate that, incorporate that in our um, in our new staff training and development. So we'll look at how we can do that as we move forward. And I, I was trying to think about how to reflect or respond to the accountability message that you're offering, because I agree with you wholeheartedly. And the only thing I could think about is, and I, you, you, you've probably heard me say before uh this, you know, notion of having the permission and responsibility and being thankful for the board. And the board chair um challenged me that on that, and the other day in one of our connects and, you know, really um reminded me that, you know, this whole uh permission piece, that's nice and all, it sounds good and this, you know, it's affirming, but really it's a responsibility. And I, I, I agree with you and I'm ultimately responsible to ensure that that is occurring at a high level. And I wanna let you know that I am um one hundred percent committed to ensuring that staff are following the expectations. And and as you know, with everything, um avoidance shows up in different ways, right? And what I've seen most actively is this avoidance and it's not clear to me. And we know Brene Brown says, clear is kind. And I'm, I'm confident that we are working extremely hard to make things clear for people. So to your point, um, that when it is clear and people still can't or will not choose to do what they need to do, rec- I, I'm fully committed to, to making sure that either they get on board or they can't be here because this is a part of who we are as a school community. So I appreciate you acknowledging the accountability around that. And that goes for not just this, although we don't have a racial equity inclusion policy, that's the same type of thing for our staff who continue to inform students in this district. So thank you for that. Um, I couldn't have set it up any better. That was beautiful. And um, I appreciate that.
Um, I have teed up quite nicely, Aston, the fact that we're gonna be working on a racial equity inclusion policy because that just needs to exist. Sorry, Laura, I didn't mean to cut you off, but just wanted to highlight that.
No, that's fine. Um, I am very, um, I'm on the policy review committee, which is myself, um, Board Member Casey and Board Member um Willsey. And um, so I saw that we were gonna be reviewing this and um prior to seeing the board book, Superintendent Osai, one of the things that I noticed glaringly is that there was no acknowledgement or um whatever of um the intersectionality of race and gender. So I'm glad that you were aware of that. And um, I, I definitely have, I know, um, I think um Chair Tombbeck, you mentioned that Casey has some language. I have some language and I know that we'll look at that during policy committee. Um, but one of the things that I wanted to share so I can make sure that this is on the record, and this goes to what Karen is saying, is how important it is to be holding our staff and teachers accountable. And it's from Kendi's um How to Be an Anti-Racist. And he puts a quote, a statistic in here. And it says, the average US life expectancy of a transgender woman of color is thirty five years. If you read that and you hear that and that does not bother you, th- there's something wrong with your moral compass. I'll go ahead and say that. And if we as a school system do not own that we have the power to change that, so we have the power to either continue to uphold a statistic like that, um, or we have the power to change it. Um, and I'm using my teacher hat right now. I teach middle school and there is a lot of transition in figuring out who you are um on many different levels. Some days they're still two years old and they're toddlers. And then other days they're, you know, twenty five, ready to rule the world. Um, and definitely gender expression and gender identity is something that they go through. Um, I hold myself as an educator res- um responsible for making sure that my classroom is a safe space. And I can tell you from my experiences that there are students that the dread, the anxiety, the nervousness that they have, and then it turns into behavior because there are certain um classrooms with certain teachers that they refuse to even step foot in. It became so bad because there were teachers or staff people that refused to recognize who they were. And I want to definitely second what Karen said. We're, we're, we're past the point of educate yourself and know what the policy is. You're either in line and supporting our students and helping them be who they are, or you're gonna have a conversation and y- you're not gonna be allowed to hurt our students. And so I really am going to work and commit, obviously, to put in the um, the intersectionality of um race and gender. But we really need to, um, I think beef this policy up for accountability measures to support you and your work in holding our staff and teachers accountable. Because we're not just talking about someone didn't learn a lesson in, you know, history class or math class. We're talking about our students' lives. And we know that this is already a group that is extremely marginalized, extremely dehumanized. And when it ends in one of the highest suicide rates um of that group, we can do something about that and we're going to. So I know that I kinda got on a soapbox, but this is definitely something, especially in our time. Um, w- we, we can do something and we're going to. So I will pause.
Um, I am hearing a desire to pull this into the policy committee between now and our second reading. Is that fair? Um, and in, in particular, um, I don't, I have some thoughts, but I think rather than go through them right now, let's pull this out, um, knowing that both the intersectionality piece and the accountability piece are what we're hearing in the conversation right now. And um, come back to this at our second reading with some suggested language in both of those areas. Is that, are people comfortable with that?
Yeah, I would just also ask, is there any additional um pieces that anybody has any concern about that they would like the policy review committee to evaluate and analyze?
And I'm taking notes, so please speak now.
Anyone?
No, but I'm on the policy committee, so I can hold
Great.
Well, no, Heather, if you wouldn't mind though, sharing it. So yeah, that we have, the rest of us have an idea of what you're gonna be working on.
And actually, it sort of builds on what Laura said, but I'm, I mean, Laura, you, I mean, knocked it out of the ballpark. So I'm not even gonna go down there, but I'm just gonna say that um, in our general statement of policy, there's, there is a little bit of an escape route for, for teachers in there that I'm noticing. And it says, unless it serves as a legitimate pedag- pedagogical, I don't know if I said that word right, tool. And I, 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 that, that is uncomfortable to me to have in there because I feel like uh teachers could, could use that for, for what? And I'm not sure what it means. I'm not sure why it's in there. Um, Aston, can you speak to why that was put in there or maybe Karen?
Yeah, you know, so there was a time, and I don't believe this course um exists anymore, where, where it, it came up, where most frequently here in St. Louis Park was in physical education courses. So there was a physical education course that we formally offered at the high school that um, over time, it wasn't originally intended for this, but over time, it kind of became a course where a lot of our Muslim female students would take the course because of some of, some religious reasons. So I, you know, well, as we were thinking about this, I know that those types of situations would come up where we would intentionally, you know, um segregate a class based on gender to be respectful of some of those pieces. So I, I would say that was kind of the intention behind it, but I, I certainly um understand what you're offering from uh the standpoint of that. That could be then turned into something that somebody uses at a later time because of a unwillingness um to, to participate at a high level.
If I could also offer, I'm sorry, if I could, another example that I'm wondering if we still do, I believe that we have temporarily separated students whose genders are boy and girl when, uh, in elementary school, when doing kind of introductory sexuality and sex ed programming. Um, from my understanding, the belief of that is around kind of the maturity level of those that age group and having some of those sensitive conversations in the presence of um students of opposite genders and just trying to, you know, kind of initiate some of those conversations. I don't know if anybody knows if that has ceased to exist. It's my understanding that's still what we do. Dr. Duffy, do you know?
Yeah, so funny you say that. We just had a group of fifth and sixth grade teachers meeting this morning to rewrite the Human Growth and Development Curriculum. And they um, we're, we're using um curriculum resources from gender spectrum and using the gender inclusion policy to inform their work. And they have made the decision not to um separate uh students by gender anymore. And we'll be having the conversations with the students all together and um have a really good plan for that and are excited about it. And um have actually have made the decision to move the discussion a little bit earlier in the year because they have found that students in fifth grade are ha- are entering puberty a little earlier and need to have the conversation more mid-year than, than right at the end of the fifth grade year. So those conversations will be happening closer to winter break and will be happening in mixed gender classrooms.
I love hearing that. That's fantastic. I would also, I would only offer the consideration that maybe even something in fourth grade from just my own personal observations as the mother of three would not be a terrible idea. Um, but sorry, to go back to Heather's um and Aston's conversation about, you know, the pedagogical tools, I think that, I mean, Heather, I think I appreciate that. And, and yeah, there's a, I think there's a great reason for the policy committee to consider that clause.
Thank you for explaining the reasons behind it.
And, and before we, I, I do wanna add, because while I, I certainly appreciate um the, the, the level of engagement here, I do wanna say there have not been um over the past couple of years, any overt acts of discrimination from our staff towards students based on their gender expression or gender identity, right? So I, I do wanna make that clear. Now, what I do believe happens, um, right, as you, as I sit in on our different student groups and hear our students experience that there are these um either unintentional or what would be considered, I, I don't even like this phrase, but microaggressions. And I don't like it because there's nothing micro about aggressions to, to students' humanity. But um, you know, those are the types of things that ultimately are, are what leads to the diminished hope of our, our children in our school. And I, and I think that those are the types of things, as you all are talking about accountability, that, that there can't be um continued space for. So but I did wanna acknowledge the fact that there have not been um overt um specific acts of discrimination towards students um based on their, you know, gender preference, identity expression, uh, any of those pieces. So I, I did wanna just mention that.
I think one more, um, just something to look for, perhaps if we ever get back to being in school in person, um, is, and, and I, I don't know when or where would be an appropriate time, but I believe that there is a GSA um at the high school. I don't know if there's one at the middle school.
Curious.
Um, and obviously, it would be with those groups if they wanted to, but it would be nice to hear from them perhaps once a year, like have them present to the board of, and, and it doesn't necessarily have to be about this policy per se. But, you know, just maybe um how they're feeling, things that they've been able to engage or, you know, programs they've been able to just to hear their voice and give them a space to share their thoughts.
I, I appreciate that suggestion. And one of the pieces that, from a leadership or administration standpoint, so we regularly meet with uh students in our uh SOR group, right? Students Organizing Against Race. And as you all know, that there's a, there's a leadership group of students that advise me on different matters connected to the district. Something else, I, I was influenced by the work of Dr. Ibram Kendi, particularly around chapters, his chapters on gender, sexuality. And, and one of the pieces that I, I realized, so the reason that I believe personally in my own development that I didn't, you know, I didn't, I didn't center that intersection piece, it's just based on my lived experiences and what we're gonna be doing as a leadership team, similar to what we do at SOR, is centering our students in GSA into conversations with our district level administration so that as we are creating practices in the district, we understand what those students' lives experiences are. So I appreciate that recommendation for board conversation, but also know that at a district level leadership, our, you know, our district level equity team, we will be centering the conversations of our students that participate in those groups so that we're making decisions that are informed by their lived experiences in our schools.
Thank you.
I just, I just wanna say to round this out, I'm sitting here and I'm reflecting and I'm thinking as I'm hearing us talk. And we implemented this policy two years ago and we kind of wrote it from scratch. I mean, we pulled pieces from here and there, but we didn't have many places to pull pieces from because at that point, I think St. Paul Public Schools had something, a couple of private schools had something. But we, I mean, and, and at that time, even MSBA advised us against this policy. So we really were kind of starting from scratch here. And so I, I know that we did the best we could. And, and again, but this is an example of how we miss things when we're not intentional about evaluating equity and looking for implicit biases and racist implications. I mean, this, our experience with this one policy, Dr. Kendi could have written his entire book about, right? About, you know, you're, the intentions might be good, but when you don't have a full education or when you're not specifically mindful about looking for examples where racism becomes inherent, then you create a racist policy. And so I am just so grateful that at this moment, two years later, we're evaluating and we're seeing it. I wish it had been done this way two years ago, but this has to be the model of how we're going forward, right? We, we accept the fact that maybe we didn't get it right the first time, but that doesn't stop us from fixing it as soon as we find out about it or as soon as we see it, or as soon as we, we can do better. When we know better, we do better. And so we're learning and I just, I, I wanna hold up this conversation as an example of what we need to be doing with all of our policies.
Excellent. Thank you. And
Now I'm off my soapbox.
No, and, and y- you can't keep going for perfect and not get anything done. And I, I think that was the spirit of our work. Because we had been studying this for a long time, and studied it, and studied it. And it, it was still important, as clearly it is imperfect. But I appreciate the willingness of our administration and my colleagues to keep getting better. And we're not gonna, we're not gonna fail without some grace, right? And, and we have to acknowledge that we know we can do better. We haven't done our best work yet, and we're going to keep at it. And that's, to me, the important thing. I don't think we're ever, ever going to get a perfect policy in any dimension. But I think we can keep striving toward that as, as long as we use our critical thinking skills and open our hearts and stay engaged. The, the work will get better. And, and I expect that with our community support, it's even going to get easier, right? Because there was, as Mary pointed out, we, we didn't have great resources to draw from. And, and in fact, had gotten advice, don't do it. But it was still the will of the board, listening to our community, that it's the right time to start. And so I do appreciate that we do have now a very robust process of policy review. Thank you.
Okay, so if you ha, if you think of anything later, please direct that to Ann, as she and the Policy Review Committee take this on, and then we will see it for a second reading in August, or whenever you are otherwise ready. And thank you again to everyone for their thoughts on this. Okay, so Policy Development's second reading of policies 208, 610, 708, and 711. If you want to take these separately, because I know the Policy Review Committee did some work particularly on 610, I believe, in between our meetings. So let's start with 208. Does anybody have any additional comments? Or considerations of this policy?
I'll just say that the main thing on 208 was that we added procedures which are not technically part of our policy. But that is where we're holding that policy review checklist that we wanted to kind of establish before we started really going through a lot of policy review. So that's the main thing. And then there were, I think, like one MSBA red line change, and then one change, just to update the name of our, of one of our policies. There's no substantive change to the actual policy. It's mostly the addition of the policy review checklist.
Correct. Anybody have anything on that, Ben? Okay, great. In the interest of time, I'm going to be trying to move kind of quickly through here. So the field trip changes, and do you want to explain the additions by the committee?
Yeah, Heather or Laura, do you, do you guys want to jump? I'll have, I guess I'll just have you jump in. We, we talked about this at our last meeting of the full board. And the Policy Review Committee met in the interim to to add a little bit of language specifically regarding equitable access to field trips. Previously, the changes were mainly in the area of transportation, sort of technical changes in the area of transportation. So what we did with the policy committee drafted, which is what you see in blue, is a kind of change to the general statement of policy to to describe what the school board sees as the, the reason for, for field trips, why we support field trips, and also to, to include a statement on equitable access. And then to add an, a line under regulations to state that all field trips must be equitably accessible to all students in St. Louis Park Public Schools without exception. The other blue, where it says, what F, the school board must approve all out-of-state and international trips. That is mainly, we moved, we moved that from the general statement of policy down to the regulations, just because it seemed to fit better there. And we added out-of-state to that. It had previously just said international. So Laura and Heather, if you guys want to jump in with anything, any other thoughts that you wanted to share, that would be great.
Laura, I think you're talking, but you're muted.
No, I was going to say, Heather, if you want to jump in, I think everyone's heard my voice quite a bit tonight.
I think you pretty much covered it, Ann. I don't, I mean, we did say out-of-state because that's an equity issue too, and we want to be knowledgeable about when this is happening. And, you know, just to kind of do that due diligence piece for us. I don't, I think that was, I think you kind of covered it though, otherwise, Ann. Laura?
No, yeah, Ann and Heather covered it very nicely.
And, and thanks to both of you for helping to draft that language. It was, Heather and Laura kind of went away and thought about it and came back with remarkably similar language, which was amazing, that they were just very much on the same page. So that was excellent.
So, this is Ken. So when we talked about this one the first time, we had said it would be a nice thing if, when they came back from, from a field trip, they would present what their findings were, and how does it align with our missions, our mission statement. Would that be more in the procedures, or?
I think that's what we decided, is that it, it's not policy language. It would be more in procedure. And I think also, please correct me if I'm wrong, Heather and Ann, but like, first of all, I don't think that we have that many either international or out-of-state trips, but we also don't want to utilize too much of our very precious board meeting time always hearing. So I think that one of the things was that, if you look at the policy, I think it's number four, School Board Review. It says, "The superintendent shall at least annually report to the school board upon utilization of trips under this policy." So we may get like a general report of, like, you know, field trips in general, but I know that there are some international trips, and I think that we discussed putting it under procedure that those trips we would like to hear from. But like every time someone goes to the nature center, we don't, as much as it would be fun to see the little kids, we don't necessarily need a report to out on that all the time. But does that kind of answer? So we did discuss that. And we, like, do we want it in policy language, or is it more procedure? And we decided it fell more into the procedure language and the, you know, protocols.
That's cool. I, I can, I can fill that. And that works.
I have, I have two questions or question comments. I'll start with the one that kind of follows up from that. I think there was some part of this where I was thinking, I don't know that we can, we put it into any sort of thing, because it is sort of a a procedure, but I, I'm sort of interested in, in knowing something related to equity being reported on at, at some point, talking about that issue specifically, or about race and other sort of qualities of the field trip that we're doing, and how those things factor into it. So I think that was one of my comments, but then
To that, though, real quick, we were actually talking about changing the form that the teachers have to fill out when requesting a field trip, and adding that as a piece at that point. What, how is this equitable? You know, what, that type of thing will be, you know, on the teacher in order to get approval to do any field trip.
Yeah. And then the, the other, that sounds good if we have some way to influence that. And then the other part is, when we say that it's equitably accessible, I think we talked about that last time, but can somebody remind me of what that means? Just in general?
It relates to fundraising or personal finances. And like, for example, the band teacher at the high school works really hard to help students do creative fundraising as individuals and a team so that everyone truly can have a chance at going on some of these big trips. And, and boy, did he negotiate hard to get families refunds after COVID-19, and the trip got canceled, right? I mean, that guy thinks of everything. But we have other teachers who don't. And they'll say casually, well, you know, the students know what's coming, and they have time to do some kind of fundraising. But it's, it's not an active expectation upon the teacher to ensure that there's equitable access. And, and that's the part that has been problematic for quite some time now. And I'll stop there.
That was helpful background. I just, I remembered us talking about it, and, but it, when you see it in print, it doesn't tell you much, but I understand, and that's not really our role, is to outline or read, probably doesn't make sense for us to put deep, deep details about what that means, but I just wanted to refresh it so that it sort of embeds in my mind. Thank you.
I'll just add then that, you know, that this is going to be on us. I mean, this is the area where we have accounted, where we can hold people accountable personally as a board. So you were, we've requested that there be a change in, you know, what the teachers are informed about when they have to come to the board for approval, but now it's going to be on us to hold them accountable for that. Like, I mean, I was just kind of hearing this, and the distinction between what you were saying, Karen, and what you were saying, Colin, like in equitable, equitably accessible could mean, well, a student can fundraise, so any student can fundraise, therefore, any student has the opportunity to go on this trip. That's very different than the teacher who actually creates fundraising opportunities and facilitates and supports students in that fundraising. So I think, you know, this, this is just part of the policy, and I don't know if, if we need to strengthen this language, or if this is Superintendent Asai, if you want to chime in about it from a procedural standpoint. But we need to be able to be prepared to turn down a teacher who comes to us and says, this is a you know, $5,000 trip to South America. And any student can go as long as they can fundraise and raise the money. So it's going to be great. You know, are, are we going to be willing to, to turn down that trip?
Well, what
The rhetorical question.
And one of the pieces that I would just, you know, these discussions have really gotten me thinking that that should, you know, if something like that is happening, should that even make it to the board, or should we have systems in place that be like, you know, no, that we're not going to submit that to the board, because that's not in line with anything that is connected to our strategic direction. So I, I, I'm hopeful that as the, the policy committee continues to have conversation that we can, you know, as, which has already been recommended, strengthen the questions and reflection that we're having our staff complete before even submitting, you know, that type of request, because I think that puts the board in a very unfair position to have to respond to a request like that.
Well, it'd certainly be hard to say no to something like that, but that is our responsibility ultimately to hold people accountable for, you know, implementation enforcement of our policies. But this is where kind of there's an interplay, Aston, to your point of that's, you know, part of your administration's review of these things before they get to us. So as long as we're all on the same page, I think that that's what's important here in terms of our intent for this policy. Okay, does anybody have any other comments or changes before it is brought to the action agenda? Okay, great. Thank you. So 708. I don't think there's been any other changes to that since the last meeting. Has there, Ann?
Flower, do you want to explain the numbering?
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, I was on mute. So what happened was, as I was, I'm going to edit 708, or as I was creating the document for 708 following MSBA's model policy, I dug through our files and saw that we had, at our website currently has a 708 posted. And in my files, there was a 708 document that had a delete watermark. So as I dug a little bit further, I saw that all of the content in the 708 that's on our website actually got pulled into Policy 714, like verbatim, every single word got pulled into Policy 714. So I, my guess is that at some point, you know, back before 2013, which is when I, where I have access to minutes, sometime before then, that policy was actually meant to be deleted. Policy 708 was meant to be deleted and taken down from our website, but it never was. So because I can't find the minutes for that, I think it's just the best practice at this point to formally delete 708, recognizing that, that, that content got pulled into 714. And then we can adopt 708 using MSBA's model policy and numbering.
So the old 708 was a fund balance policy, which got pulled into the new fund balance policy, which is 714. And this 708 that is in front of us, the new 708 is a model policy that was recommended by Patricia and the Transportation Consultant to, to start to take on new.
Right. A little bit of cleaning up happening.
Mary, you're muted.
Thank you. Okay, so that's 708. Anybody have any other questions on that, Ben? Okay, hearing none. 711. Again, I don't think there were any additional changes to that, Ann.
No, that's a new policy recommended by Patricia and the Transportation Department. Pretty much taken verbatim from, from model policy. And as you can see, you know, it's a very short policy, and I think there's six different statutory requirements, so it's largely statutory as well.
Great. Okay, thank you. Any anything else on any of these then, before we move on? Before we see them again in the action agenda? Okay, great. I'll just add one more time that this was a really heavy lift for the Policy Review Committee for its inaugural activities. So thank you guys so, so much for, for all of your review on this. And Patricia?
It has honestly, Mary, it's been a pleasure. And I think I can speak for the other, the others, that it, it really has been a pleasure, and we're really looking forward to more. So it doesn't, doesn't, it didn't feel like a heavy lift. It felt like good work.
Well, I love the way that this process is happening. I think this is already yielding better policies than our previous practice.
It's your for us, because you guys are doing a lot of this heavy reviewing before the meeting. So thank you for that.
Yeah. Then we just have problems with something, and we say, I'll give it to the Policy Review Committee. They'll solve everything. It's really working out smoothly.
They said they were ready for more, so I think that's our cue.
All right. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Does anybody want to pull anything off of the consent agenda this evening? Hearing nothing. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Move by Ann?
Second.
Second, is that Heather?
Yeah, sorry.
No, no, that was fine. I didn't have my whole screen up. Karen, do you want to do the roll call?
Sure. Mary Tombeck.
Hi.
Colin Cox.
Hi.
Ann Casey.
Hi.
Laura McLendon.
Hi.
Heather Wilsie.
Hi.
Ken Morrison.
Hi.
Karen Waters. I. Carrie 70.
Thank you. Next is that, moving on to the action agenda, the first up is fiscal year 21 budget approval. It is recommended the school board approves a fiscal year 21 budget as presented. Is there a motion? All right, Ken moving, Colin seconding. Any discussion? I think we have discussed this plenty, haven't we?
I just want to say one quick thing, and that's that Patricia said this is the only book she ever wrote, and it may not be a bestseller, but we're really, really extremely grateful. And this process has been phenomenal this year. And the fact that we don't have any questions does not reflect that we're not understanding or paying close attention, is that we have been given so many opportunities to be educated on this budget process. Is that we have been given so many opportunities to be educated on this budget process and the budget and so many opportunities to ask our questions. And it's just been such a great process. So I think I feel very good about this budget process. I feel good about the budget. I feel I'm, I'm really glad that the decision was made to keep the budget as it is with with sort of pulling out things that might happen with COVID, but kind of trying to go forward in a normal, what would happen in a normal year so that we can get updates throughout the year. And I think the the fund balance, I I keep thinking about this and and it feels very strange to say, you know, look at this and think, well, we might lose 3% of our fund balance. And then I think this is an emergency. That is what it's for. We are in an emergency and to think that even in an emergency, we're still well above our our minimum board approved fund balance that that just demonstrates the the responsibility, the fiscal responsibility that boards before us have have had and that Patricia is really, really enabling us to to keep now on this current board. So thank you for all that and let's do it.
And I just had one more thing, which was just to thank the community for their involvement. I know that Patricia worked really hard to set up the Budget Committee and they were involved with maybe not some of these hard decisions, but some of the earlier conversations and helped connect and provide a sounding board. And I think that's really helpful again in this effort to be transparent. So just wanted to say a quick note of thanks for that involvement.
Is this yours?
This, so.
Mr. Morrison, I think you need to mute yourself.
Sorry, I just realized that.
That's quite all right. Happens to the best of us, to be sure. Okay, no other discussion points. Let's do the roll call vote, please, Karen.
Mary Tombeck.
Hi.
Helen Cox.
Hi.
Anne Casey.
Hi.
Laura McLendon.
Hi.
Heather Wilsie.
Hi.
Ken Morrison.
Hi.
Karen Waters. I. That passes 70.
Okay, next, approval of the long-term facility maintenance funding strategy. It is recommended that the school board approve the long-term facility maintenance funding strategy as presented. Patricia, why don't we talk about this before we take a motion?
Yep, we just have a quick presentation. It's basically the same presentation we gave you a year ago. And you could just go to the the next slide. We have to every year and really the next slide even. Statute requires that when school districts use long-term facility maintenance funds, that the board annually must approve a 10-year revenue and expenditure plan and complete a statement of assurances. And long-term facility maintenance is a funding that's available for deferred maintenance projects only. They can't be, these funds cannot be used for general fund items like lowering class size or transportation costs. It's really just for deferred maintenance projects. And a year ago, we brought forward a plan in two parts that we would engage in a bond sale so that we could really put some upfront funding into our deferred maintenance plan and then continue a million dollars a year pay-as-you-go levy. And so these bond, this bond principal and interest is built into the current budget and into this revenue and expenditure plan. And if our plan stays intact, we'll probably probably be back this year again with another bond sale that will keep our principal and interest and our tax impact flat. But like usual, we'll give the board lots of chances to understand that and make sure that the plan is still the one that you want to move forward with. But for now, this is the funding that's available to us is those two types. And and this is what, these are the projects that we were trying to cover at the time. With our bond, there, there's two slides. There was $15 million that helped us accelerate some pressing health and safety needs in our mechanical systems, in our schools and some indoor air quality projects. And then we wanted to include some health and safety projects in the construction projects. So we included another $7 million to just guard against rising costs of construction. And Tom has done a, Tom Bravo has done a great job of watching the budget and make sure that we are holding those funds for for the right kinds of things. And then the next slide then includes the projects that we wanted to make sure we could complete while we were already in these buildings. So another $10.5 million went toward these several projects that we were able to complete or will be completing. And so that's the bonding parts of the project. And then on our annual levy, we have about $1 million, which is a pay-as-you-go levy, just a straight-up million-dollar levy to cover all kinds of health and safety and deferred maintenance projects in all of the Department of Education allowed categories. And so Tom manages those budgets. And I know that Tom's on the call and if he, if you have any questions, he can help answer them. But that's just, we wanted to remind you of what's included in our 10-year plan for revenues and expenses. Nothing has changed since last year. And there's also, I just want to say out loud, then there's also a plan on District 287 has to go through a similar process and create a 10-year revenue and expenditure plan. And each member district has to approve that plan. So that's what the other resolution is for, similar to every other year we've done this.
Okay, thank you, Patricia. We can ask questions now if we want.
I think we need the motion first.
Motion first. Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved. Heather.
Move, move by Heather.
Second.
We'll give it to Anne.
Okay, second by Anne. Thank you. Any discussion? Now would be a good time to ask Patricia or Tom any questions that you have. Once again, thank you very much for your clear and concise explanation of what we're voting on here and your jugging a recollection about having done it previously. So roll call, Karen?
Mary Tombeck.
I.
Anne Casey.
Hi.
Helen Cox.
Hi.
Laura McLendon.
Hi.
Heather Wilsie.
Hi.
Ken Morrison.
Hi.
Karen Waters. I. That carries 70.
Great. Next up is the same thing, Patricia, right, for 287. So I'm going to go ahead and just ask for the motion now. Don't move. Oops, Heather and Anne. Any discussion?
As the 287 rep, I'll just say we saw the same presentation. And I believe that the the couple of big items that were on the, that are on the budget are a roof, a parking lot, roofing and a parking lot. Those are the things that I remember that I have in my notes. But that you can see that we've represented a pretty small percentage of the overall total of the LTFM for 287, which is about the same as last year, maybe a little bit less, but about the same as last year.
All right, thanks, Anne. No, hearing no questions. Karen, do you want to do roll call?
Mary Tombeck.
I.
Anne Casey.
Hi.
Heather Wilsie.
Hi.
Helen Cox.
Hi.
Laura McLendon.
Hi.
Ken Morrison.
Hi.
Karen Waters. I. That carries 70.
Next, approval of transportation contracts. It is recommended the school board approves the contracts for transportation providers Park Adam and MTI as presented. Patricia, can you present, please?
Yes, the contracts are included along with the specifications and rate sheets. And I just want to say that we had long discussions with both of these vendors. And I'm really pleased with the contracts we were able to to agree to and would recommend them for approval tonight. We have a long relationship with Park Adam Transportation. And I think the compromise we were able to get to here really reflects Park Adam's commitment to the community and to the students of St. Louis Park. And I really, I really believe in their work. And what they try to do is tell us honestly what they believe that they can provide for us this year. And the market is very difficult right now for transportation providers. And so it's going to be really important for us to be diligent about the way we utilize transportation and make sure that we understand the limitations they're working under. It's going to be a different world. And one of the major things is that they have committed to only a maximum of 28 daily routes. And we've normally had 32, or we had 32 routes with Park Adam this year. We will probably come to the board with another transportation contract with another, with a third vendor to pick up a few routes. Just to be sure that we are covered for everything that we want to be able to commit to. We've got a great working relationship with them, working with K-12 Transportation. It hasn't always been easy. But I think working together through this contract, we've really come to a good understanding of each other's limitations and what we can offer. And so I'm really pleased about that. And we are also pleased to be engaging in a contract with mainline transportation with MTI. It's will be our third year, I believe, using them for special education services. And that's, it's been good to have those two types of busing split between two different vendors. And so I believe we'll have a, we should have a strong start to the year with these two vendors if we can meet the needs of of COVID transportation.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Move by Ken.
Second.
Second by Laura. I heard first. Any discussion? This is when we ask questions of Patricia on this. I know this was a lengthy negotiation, Patricia, so thank you so much. I trust that you advocated for the boards and students' interests, I should say, the districts and the students' interest to the greatest extent possible. All right, seeing and hearing no further questions or comments. Karen?
Mary Tombeck.
I.
Anne Casey.
Hi.
Heather Wilsie.
Hi.
Laura McLendon.
Hi.
Helen Cox.
Hi.
Ken Morrison.
Hi.
Thank you. And Karen Waters. I have to abstain.
Oh, I'm sorry, Karen. I was supposed to say that.
That's okay. We, it's due to a tangential family connection to one of the providers. And anybody else who needs particular details can see me personally about that. So that carries six, yes, and one abstention.
That reminds me, Mary, I should have said that I don't need to abstain because the Anne Casey that is listed on the contract is neither me nor related to me. We just have the same name.
That is very important clarification because I know so many people in this community think you are one and the same.
Yes, not the same person.
Yes. Thank you for clarifying that. Okay. All right, next is approval of the solar panel contract. It is recommended that the school board approve the contract for solar panel installation as will be presented to us by Tom Bravo.
Yes, Mary Tombeck, Superintendent Asai, school board members. I know it's been a long night, so I'll try to make this quick. And we brought this forth, oh, when I started five years ago. And even before that, that this, the school district wanted to have solar panels. And thanks to the school district's, school district's support and so forth. We got to a point now where I feel comfortable and the school district feels comfortable and our school attorneys feel comfortable that we can get into an agreement to start putting solar panels on our roofs. One of the biggest things that we wanted to do is to make sure our roofs are ready for it so that we don't have to pull the solar panels off the roofs once they go on it after so many years. So the goal objectives was to, for price reduction, decrease validity, price certainty, maximum savings, environmental attributes, systems ownerships, and minimize counterparty risk. And I think we've accomplished those. We had a lot of meetings with attorneys. And I think they all feel comfortable and Patricia was, was a spearheading all this on making sure that we got it done right. Quickly, we're way over thousands and thousands of solar panels on all our buildings. And all our buildings will will benefit from what we're going to be doing. Next slide. So more you can see, so every building in this district is going to be touched with solar panels. So we had a process and I won't go through the whole thing because it's been a long, long, long process. But we feel comfortable what we're going to be doing. But one thing that I do want to stress is that I don't know about other districts, but we're one of, I think, a few districts that when everything's said and done in three years, half of our energy for this district is going to be alternative energy. And that's a big feat for what we've agreed to when we talked to city council members in the city of St. Louis Park about how we're going to have alternative energy in this district by, I think, it's 2030, 2040. Next slide. And so tonight, we want to enter a contract with Sundial Solar. And we want to make sure that people understand that we, as a district, one of the biggest things that we push forward is to make sure that our risks are very minimal. There are risks, like everything else. No one knew COVID-19 was going to hit. And certain things happen. There are risks on solar panels. But the risk is is mitigated to a point where the district has decisions and is in the the ability to make sure that they could go one way or the other. An example I'm going to give you is the ownership of solar panels after so many years. The district has to decide whether they want to own them upright and reap all the energy savings or continue with the contract and make sure that they, when the contracts ended after so many years, that we are not stuck with solar panels that may contain hazardous material, things like that. So those are things that we want to make sure that we put into this contract so that we are protecting the district in, after so many years and making sure that the district understands that. Also, Exo Energy has become a great big partner of us, for us. And they have still on track by getting 80% of their alternative energy through solar panels. So we're going to hit that mark of what we request, what the city of St. Louis Park requests of us within, you know, 20, 20 years or so. So I won't get into the rest of this stuff, but there's going to be quite a bit of of energy savings. We, we, we won't see that, of course, right away. But what we'll see is the reduction of the carbon footprint. And that's a big thing for this district. I think if you had high school students listening to this around board, that is a big deal for them and for the community and for us as staff members is how do we reduce the carbon footprint? This is one of the areas that we can do that. This is self-explanatory and I said the carbon footprint itself. Where we, we as a district are doing a lot more than I know than other districts are doing in reducing the carbon footprint by the things that we're doing in construction, everything's sustainable, created a grave. We don't have things that that we're putting into these, this district that has to be thrown in the dumpster anymore after so many years of usage. So we're very proud of that. And I think with the, with the support of the, the school board member, the districts and Superintendent Asai, we're getting there. So again, the next steps is is to go ahead with approval of a contract with Sundial Solar and start putting solar panels. Once our roofs are completed, first batch will be done by the end of the summer. And this is a three-year process, so in three years, half of our energy will be to the solar power. Any questions?
I just want to add some of the statistics we got today from, from Connect Energy consulting with us. Is that over the 25-year life of the projects will save over $3 million. So that's one marker to look at. That's important. But I thought this was stunning. Based on the estimated annual solar production, this equates to a reduction of approximately 5.1 million pounds of carbon emissions each year. Two and a half tons of saved carbon emissions each year. I think that's just a stunning statistic.
That's awesome. All right, so we'll take motions and then you can ask questions.
So moved.
Move by Ken.
Second. Heather.
Second by Heather. Thank you, Karen. Or no, sorry, any discussion? Or no, sorry, any discussion?
Statement.
Okay.
It's great that you're able to work it out to get the contracts with them so we won't have to deal with the disposal because Tom and you and I have talked about that for a while. And it's great that it worked out so that it's still profitable for us and beneficial for the company. So, and saving a lot of money and carbon footprint's going to be great. And we can continue to see those checks come in and that you show us. So, great, nice job, guys.
I was just going to say some complimentary words too. Thank you for your work on this. I know you've been working hard on it. And I remember being on the facilities committee or what we call the learning design committee several years ago and how important these green initiatives and things came up from so many people in that group. And so, good to see that coming to fruition in all different types of ways, shapes and forms. And the only thing I would say, Tom, is next time, you know, maybe position yourself so, so that you don't have a ceiling fan above your head. It's hard to take it seriously. And there's a thing spinning over your head the whole time, it looks like you have a spinny hat. That's you're perfectly positioned there. But thank you for your hard work. I didn't keep you from just too distracted from seeing all the good work that you put into this. Thank you.
Okay, seeing nobody else wanting to chime in. Karen, you want to do roll call?
Mary Tombeck.
Aye.
Helen Cox.
Aye.
Laura McLendon.
Aye.
Ken Morrison.
Aye.
Ann Casey.
Aye.
Karen Waters.
Aye.
Heather Wilsie.
Aye.
That carries 7-0.
Fantastic. Next, it is recommended that the school board approve the second reading of policies 208, 610, 708, and 711 as discussed and presented. Is there a motion?
I'll move, Colin.
So moved by Colin, seconded by?
Heather, second.
Heather, thank you. Any discussion? Great, Karen?
Mary Tombeck.
Aye.
Ann Casey.
Aye.
Heather Wilsie.
Aye.
Laura McLendon.
Aye.
Ken Morrison.
Aye.
Helen Cox.
Aye.
Karen Waters.
Aye.
That carries 7-0.
Thank you, okay. It is time for communications and transmittals. And in the interest of time and in respect for especially all of our cabinet members who have been sitting here so patiently, I would just request that we keep these kind of essential items tonight.
Just one.
Yep.
We need to celebrate something really important. Dr. Leanne Stevens was published in a journal called "A Sacred Space: 12 Expert Teachers Share Stories of Resilient Success in Leadership." Her article was about promoting racial equity among teacher leaders. And she's an amazing educator. She's Minnesota Teacher of the Year from 2006. She's one of our finest teachers and racial equity leaders. I was privileged to be at the defense of her doctorate and I had some students with me who were part of her civil rights research experience. And it was very important for these students to see their teacher achieve a goal and dream of hers with her doctorate. But that team challenged her to stay engaged with the work and the research and to continue publishing. And this is an example of that. So this is something Dr. Stevens does on her own time. And it's important to recognize she, she is an expert in racial equity and not only in our community, but she shares that with others as well through her continuing work. So thank you, Dr. Stevens, for being such an exemplar of excellence in our community.
I just quickly wanted to say, community, Ed had their advisory council meeting and it was great. We checked in, we met the new director, we heard from the city and had great participation by lots of people. And so it's good so that we continue to get great updates. And then got to say thank you to Lisa too. So thank you.
I was muted before, but Karen, would you be able to share that article by Dr. Stevens with the board members?
Yes.
Thank you very much. She is a tremendous asset to our students and to this community. Anything else?
I have one. For those of us, I'm sure we all have heard that Marnie Zhang, the chairwoman of the St. Paul School Board, she passed away from COVID about a week and a half ago or two weeks. Her memorial service is this Friday. It's, you can go in person, but it's all day. They're expecting a lot of people and obviously if you decide to go, wear a face mask. But if you want to see her specific work, there is a community like, or a program from three to five and it will be live streamed. And so they're asking if you are, you know, if you want, if you're interested or if you are planning on going, that perhaps that might be another way to try and keep down the number of people. But they'll be recognizing and honoring her work this Friday, so.
Thanks, Laura.
AMSD hosted the Reimagine Minnesota Conference last week. I think myself, Mary, Laura, and Heather were able to participate in that. And there's quite a few materials available on their website if you want to check stuff out. And our own Superintendent Osi participated in the superintendent panel and was, made us extremely proud, I think, yet again. So thank you for that, Superintendent Osi.
Ken?
I got nothing.
Heather? All right, well, I will end this evening by, with some ridiculously dreadful news that this is Flower Crotina's last board meeting as the executive assistant extraordinaire that she is. She has brilliant, like, I'm, if she doesn't start crying soon, then I am not going to be successful in what I'm doing. Come on, you know you want to. She has accomplished and learned and developed and assisted and aided and supported us in countless, countless ways. The fact that she has never been a superintendent or worked in this role in a, in a district before, and within weeks, we were all just having her tell us how to do our jobs in many ways, shows how incredibly intelligent and wise and eager and enthusiastic and quick to learning she is. And we are all, I don't even want to talk about her anymore because we're all so mad at her that she is leaving. But this is what happens when you have somebody who is as brilliant and incredible as she is, that she gets incredible offers to go do other things. And so Flower, I know I speak for all of us when I say that we wish you the absolute best in the entire world, all wonderful things that you are completely deserving of. And also, we're mad at you and we never want to speak to you.
Thank you. And I, I can't cry because I actually put on mascara today for this meeting and no one wants to see that. So, no, but thank you, Chair Tombeck. I mean, it's, it's been such a pleasure and honor to have learned and worked alongside you and the rest of the board, you know, next to Superintendent Osi and his leadership team. I mean, what, from day one, it's been just so great to see how collaborative everyone is and how everyone is really striving to make an impact in this community and, and in the world ultimately with, with all the students of St. Louis Park. And what I've told Superintendent Osi and other, you know, team members that I've spoken to is you're not getting rid of me quite yet. I still have three in the district here and I've really been inspired to, you know, be more engaged with the schools in ways that I haven't been before. So you, you haven't seen the last of me yet.
Fantastic. One of these days, you should be sitting up on the day of Swift, some of us. I won't be here probably anymore, but that would be a great addition as well, so. All right. I think that's it. So, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Move by Ken.
I'll second.
Second by Colin, Karen?
Mary Tombeck.
Aye.
Ann Casey.
Aye.
Heather Wilsie.
Aye.
Laura McLendon.
Aye. Failure.
Ken Morrison.
Aye.
Helen Cox.
Aye.
Karen Waters.
Aye.
That carries 7-0.
Just think of how incredibly grateful we are all going to be when we are sitting at that table again in person. To worry about these damn buttons. All right, good night, everybody. Thank you so much.
Thanks, everybody.